Bartlett Board Meeting for March the 16th, 2021. Let the record show, we're starting early at 6:00 PM this evening to review some additional budget items. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Josie Carbonaro.
President.
Danny. Gansey.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
President.
Swansky.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. I am assuming with, um, the items that we're going to cover here this evening are all following under, um, building and zoning. So we'll separate out these items, um, basically then move into the regular agenda items, correct? The budgeting items. You've got admin. Yep. Admin first, finance, golf, public works, and central services. And what, and just so we're all on the same page, um, I know Todd usually does this or, um, shouldn't call you Todd, I guess, our secretary, treasurer usually does this, but can, the rundown is that we're reviewing, because I had some questions about when to ask questions about the budget from a few different, uh, folks. So, um, during this committee meeting, um, if you have any questions, or if you have any suggestions, or if you have any things that you'd like to alter, this is the time to do it. Um, so we'll do as many as we can here, and then from a timing standpoint, we have until what date to confirm the budget.
Right now, we have it on the agenda to approve it the first meeting in April. Um, we still have a second meeting in April that we could possibly approve the budget if we need to, um, do more discussion, the first meeting in April. The, uh, budget does need to be passed by the first day of May, though. So it needs to be passed sometime in April.
So we can hopefully get through most of what we were needing to look through today, but if we don't, then it'd be the first meeting in April to shore some stuff up, and then second meeting in April would be the approval date. Everybody good on that? Okay. So I think probably correcting the record, this is the committee part of the meeting, so. But with that being said, we will, um, call the building and zoning, I think it's under finance and golf, Chairman Danny.
Yes, sir. We've got, uh, Phil here from the golf course, and what do you want to do first? Food and beverage, or do you want to?
We're, we're starting with admin, and then we're trying to do admin and finance before the regular seven o'clock meeting, and if we can do more than that, we will, but, um, then we'll break for our seven o'clock meeting, and then we'll have the rest of the committee after, after our regular board meeting is seven. And we'll pick up the rest of the departments, probably public works and golf after our seven o'clock board meeting. So, uh, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott, and he's going to go over administration department.
Evening, Mayor and Board. Thanks for allowing me to give you the administration budget for this upcoming year. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me, otherwise I'm happy to take them at the end as well. Um, obviously, this year saw quite a challenge with the pandemic, and the village board and the administrator helped put together a financial action plan. That plan increased, uh, included a hiring freeze, a salary increase, halting of capital equipment purchases for six months, and a constant evaluation of those items, and deployment of those items as when, uh, we felt comfortable, uh, making those, um, adjustments. It also saw, uh, grants totaling of $74,000 for 22 bit, small businesses. We, uh, took that program, we, uh, put it together and got it right, uh, in the, in the height of the lockdown, and it helped a lot of businesses, and it was pretty swift and a good process, and 22 of our small businesses were able to get relief, uh, during the most difficult times of the pandemic earlier last year. The budget, uh, also sees a continued win-win of employee insurance costs. If you recall, 2018, you tasked the administrator with putting together a plan to save money on our health insurance, and, uh, that plan has been executed quite well. Over the last three years, we've seen, uh, savings of $500,000 over that time, and with that savings, we saw adjusted high deductible PPO plans. We also introduced an HSA this year that many of our employees, uh, saw. And over the course of those three years, as we've saved half a million dollars in employee health insurance, we've received zero complaints from our employees, zero. And part of that communication process that our human resources department along with Bartlett Insurance put together for our employees, so we're saving the money and we're still staying competitive in the marketplace. So that's a win-win for this budget. While the pandemic has hurt the business community, it's only strengthened our relationship with them. We've communicated them with, we've communicated with the business community more in the last year than I think we ever have. We've reached out to every single business in Bartlett, um, and that's personally that we did that. On top of our COVID business page on our website, as well as our business blasts. Um, the business parks continue to be a strong asset of the village. As you stood here a year ago, Brewster Creek Business Park on the Cook County side, um, there was not a lot going on. As of right now, it's 66% full, with the largest building, um, going in McKesson, and the second largest building that's starting to put their walls up. So I'd imagine by next year, when we have this budget, the Cook County portion of Brewster Creek will be completely full. We really anticipate that. And that wouldn't be possible without the board's support of the Class 6Bs. Um, those 6Bs, uh, provided to be, uh, a make or break for those Cook County businesses coming in. Next, I'll take you to the next page. Um, while this year's community events were not in person, we did have each and every one of them. We had our Memorial Day Walk, our Fourth of July Parade, National Out, Taste of the Towns, Holiday Tree Lighting, and although they happened in a very different manner, they did happen virtually, and, uh, that was a big part of our, uh, efforts for this year to still have that community outreach. With the closure of everything, um, although the museum had to alter its operations, it never really closed, the virtual events were quite robust. Pam Roliter, our museum director, actually took a lot of the cutouts and museum displays and put them outward, so we did see some, some foot traffic looking at those, those types of things. Um, Pam also did the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, the historical presidential campaigns, mid-century Christmas decorations, traditions, and, um, she also went to the schools virtually as well. Um, and one more thing that, uh, we found quite helpful, uh, during, during the height of the lockdown was Pam sent, uh, articles to the Examiner, and they featured those, uh, for several weeks in a row, um, highlighting some of our history. And it was nice to have the residents have something to read for them. Our communications team also made history by having, uh, the first television programming on our cable channel. Usually you'll see those static slides of community updates. This year, we had our Memorial Day, our, um, and our tree lighting, as well as the Fourth of July Parade, all on the cable channel. Fourth of July Parade was actually, uh, old highlights, um, that Pam and Joy worked together for the 1991 Bartlett Celebration. And if you watched it, you saw a nice homage to our village president, Bill Thichness, and the late trustee, Tila O'Haraans. So we're very proud of, of, of putting that 1991 Fourth of July Parade on, uh, on all our media. We also, uh, participated in the Boo Drive-Thru. Uh, it was just a posted note that Paula put on our desks, it said Boo Drive-Thru. We did it, we executed it with all the taxing bodies, and we had cars that were lined up, and, and very, very high praise from the residents on that event, when they weren't able to do a lot outside their homes. We had 700 cars for them. And also some highlights, too, um, when you were, uh, thirteen years ago at the budget, our streets of Bartlett was below 50% occupancy. It is now filled 30 of 31 units, and soon to be, uh, 100% occupied, um, along with several different restaurants. They've seen a metamorphosis, including Delicious Crepes and O'Hare's. Um, they'll also be, uh, have a bowling alley open, uh, very soon, so the growth of that, uh, development is something you should be really proud of, and something that took a lot of time this year, so we're excited about that. On the next page, um, while the development of bars and grills have been nice, we've also attracted several other businesses, including Good Beans, a coffee shop. We've got, we had zero bakeries for many, many years, now we have two. One is a brick and mortar that you saw at the BETA level, the other is a pop-up that is, uh, next to the coin shop in the little shops at Bartlett. So we're very proud of, of those two operations. We also saw Culver's, which was a huge hit, um, and we're very proud of that development, and you guys helped foster that, so that was a, a huge hit. We had corporate come in and, and tell the, tell the community that, out of the 12 stores that they opened, that Bartlett was the best to work with. So that's something to be very proud of as well, and I think they'll be there for a long time. Moving on, um, our goals of attracting a grocery store, I think you, you've seen a little bit of that. We're working with our village property, and we have LOIs on that, so that continues to be, uh, a goal of next year that we continue to work toward. Moving on to the next page.
Hey Scott, I think we should have required a fitness program when we put Culver's in. I can say that is a dangerous place to go.
It certainly is.
Yeah, right by Culver's, after you have the concrete or whatever they're called.
And you can wash it down with some Hoot Dog. Um, in terms of, uh, you know, in terms of the pandemic, uh, the village never really slowed down. Our board meetings, commissioner meet, commission meetings, administrative adjudication, museum events, civic group events, they continued to happen in the form of Zoom. Um, we constantly battled adaptations and different procedures. A lot of the times, the governor would come out with his mandates at Friday at 3:00, and we'd be scrambling to figure out, uh, in terms of, a lot of restaurant, retail, curbside pickup, so we spent a lot of time this year facilitating that. We worked with our GIS department, and within probably three days, we got our curbside pickup map, um, for every restaurant and retail store in Bartlett. We did a lot of extra programming with the Bartlett Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we did everything from signage to special programming to Taste of the Towns. We took out several ads in the Bartlett Examiner. Um, we have, in terms of COVID, we had two centralized pages, both of which probably received a dozen or so updates. One was for our local businesses and one was for our residents. Those pages are still active, and really what they are is centralized informational sources for both of those, both of those parties. Um, another thing that we did in terms of, of, of opening and closing was, um, coming up with decals, um, PPE procedures, um, some of those shields that you'll see at, at the front, uh, front counters. Those were in place to protect the residents, as well as our employees, and I, I think it's critical to mention, when we say protect our employees, when you go to, uh, pull out a permit, that's also a resident. We have a lot of residents at our, at our front desk as well. You pull a permit, you see a resident. You have a utility bill payment, a resident. You ask for electoral information, you see a resident. When you call and ask a question about our web, website, it's a resident, so that protection was, was twofold, and we're happy about it.
I think I would just add that, you know, we really had to rethink every interaction that we had in, in every department, and, and how we were going to, like Scott said, um, give a level of comfort both to our, um, employees and to the residents coming into Village Hall. Um, and, and there were, as you remember, there's a lot of confusion. A lot of people picking up the phone, asking, what, what can we go to? What's open? Where, where do we go? How do I pay my water bill? How do I get, what do I do with my parking permit? There were just a lot of those, just kind of day-to-day questions that people had, because things were all thrown up in the air, and like Scott said, the, the things would change on Friday afternoon. And, um, we spent a lot of time, um, working with our, our local businesses directly, getting information out to them, um, on the different, um, federal programs and the state programs that were available to them. And one of the, um, I think really good tools that we used this year were the town halls that, that, um, the mayor hosted and did with a number of different, um, taxing districts, um, to provide direct information to the people who needed it. And we heard a lot of good feedback, um, on all those topics, but especially the one that we did with, um, small business owners, because we could hear directly what they needed and where they needed the help. Um, we, um, coordinated that with the Small Business Association to give them direct information on, on how they could then, you know, talk to their bank or, or, or work through the myriad of forms that they had to fill out. Um, a lot of that, just, just having a face and a phone, um, conversation did a lot to, I think, smooth a lot of people's jangled nerves, uh, as we went through the pandemic. And those relationships stayed, um, a lot, and I think a lot of the, a lot of, um, our business owners and residents feel a, a greater comfort level picking up the phone and asking a question now, too. Um, one of the other, um, benefits that we found was the increase in regional and, and local taxing district participation. Um, you know, the mayor's still on, and I am, uh, still on the weekly calls with the, with the Health Department, and the semi-regular calls with the City of Chicago and the different COGS on a weekly basis, and, you know, I speak to the managers group, I know the mayor, um, with the mayors, and also, um, we've kicked back to a, a, every other week call with our local taxing districts to share information, um, just in the, um, village of Bartlett within. So that has been a, another outgrowth of that.
Yeah, there was, like Paula said, several hundred calls, and that March through April period, and into May, there were many evenings where Paula would have a phone call, and then another one would pop up, and I would take one, and then another one would pop up, and we'd give to somebody else on the staff, and those phone calls were, were happening, uh, pretty much on a daily basis. Um, in terms of our, um, Paula had mentioned that we had somebody from the small business person on Zoom to our entire business community within a few days of the shutdown. We orchestrated that, uh, got him on the schedule, and were able to have a person, a human being for our businesses to speak to, so that was very good. And, and part of that business outreach, too, is our email program that we devised, uh, I think it was probably about a year and a half ago, where we can send every business in Bartlett an email. Uh, we sent 105 pandemic-related emails, which sounds like a lot, but our emails are targeted where we could do restaurants only, Cook County only, business park only, retail only, so those were not businesses getting 105 emails from, from us. Those were targeted emails, so we're very proud of, of that email system, and it's working quite well, and we were fortunate to have it at, at the start of the, of the pandemic. Not to keep going on about the pandemic, but another highlight this year, a special thanks to, uh, Kyle Ribaskey and Commander McGuigan, who's actually, I can see back there, and Sam Hughes. We worked for months and months and months on this Kears County money and FEMA money, and the village was able to recoup $1.7 million approximately, um, give or take a few thousand. So that's something that was, um, a lot of work was involved, and, and thanks to those, those gentlemen for spearheading that. And I will move on, if any, if nobody has any questions about the narrative portion.
Took a couple shots, didn't it, Commander? Took a cou, took a couple of shots to get it all, but you took both shots and we got it. Yeah, very well done.
We had a, in the training room in the police department, we had a whiteboard, and I think Commander went through several markers during that. We have, so I'll take you to page 11, where we have no personnel request, page 12, no capital outlay. Um, what you'll see here is, is our typical lineup of events, many of which we obviously didn't do, um, last year because of COVID. One thing you'll see on there that is different this year than last year is we're bringing back the strategic plan, as well as a UAV prep course. That's a course that a few of us will be taking for, um, drone operations, and, uh, Chris Hosteller will talk about that a little more during his budget presentation, so you'll hear that. Um, the professional associations mostly stayed the same. Um, some saw that standard minimal, you know, 2% to 3% increase. Some costs remain the same. There are no changes on professional association detail. Page 17 on government expenditures. Uh, in terms of regular salaries, you'll see a larger, uh, difference than normal because of the pay freeze for the first six months. That's why the estimate's a little bit lower than normal. Again, that was for the pay freeze for the first six months. Um, in terms of service agreements, you'll see a rather large jump from 2,500 to 7,800. That's because administration has taken over FOIA's from what was community development. They combine departments. Sam Hughes is our lead FOIA officer for the village side, so that's the, the software you'll see there that's, uh, for FOIA's, and that's why you see that big jump. Um, in terms of professional development, that large jump is because of strategic planning. We did the two-to-three-year plans, and it's time to revisit that, um, so we'll be doing that, uh, this upcoming year, and that's why you see that jump there. Um, civic funding. Civic funding groups, uh, the monies that ha, they have asked for, if we allocate those requests, that line item will still be down 5%. Uh, Heritage Days is no longer requesting money, um, so that takes that number down. The Bartlett Chamber of Commerce is requesting about 1,500 extra dollars, um, since their business involves other businesses. I, I think, I, from a staff perspective, we'd recommend that increase to the chamber.
Is there a reason that they weren't, Heritage Days wasn't requesting, or what?
I think the, I think just the year off, they lost a lot of momentum, and different folks now might not want to run the event, from what I understand, so I think it was a lot, a lot of lost momentum and just, just decided not to, not to proceed. So the total line item for that civic funding will be down about 5% if you fulfill all the, all the requests. Um, and those are, those are the same amounts that you've seen over the years, except for the chamber, who is asking for, uh, a little bit more money for civic funding. And you'll also see, um, there's a large jump, um, for the estimated contingencies. We budgeted 10,000. We're estimating expenditure of $35,000, but that was all COVID-related materials, and those are all 100% reburt, reimbursed by the, uh, money that we, that we got, so that's why you'll see that 35,000, um, for COVID mitigation. Um, in the last page, I talked about the civic funding. Um, we are recommending, uh, to continue the 250 in the BETA program, and if that's the end of it, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Do you think, um, the BETA funding comes from video gaming?
Uh.
Do you think there'll be $250,000 in revenue?
Well, at least, at least that, yeah. Unless there's something, some scary second different thing, COVID-22 or something, but February was open again, and it was actually our largest, uh, revenue month in the history of the village for video gaming. And there's a few more machines down the pipeline, um, so that will only continue to grow.
Have, um, some other, I know they increased the number of, of machines that you can have per place. Has any of the locations in Bartlett taken advantage of that?
Yeah, there's a few that have gone to six.
Went up to six, didn't it?
Yep.
And?
All the gaming facilities obviously went to six.
Probably one thing we should talk about, because I think we only charge around 300 bucks a machine now.
It's 500.
Is it 500?
Yep.
I have conversations with mayors that say we're crazy, just because they charge like a thousand or 1,500 per machine, um, which, when you guys that aren't really familiar with how this money gets paid out, the lion's share is, uh, a lot bigger portion is going to the, um, proprietor and to the, um, person leasing the machines to the proprietor, and most of it is going?
When a business pays the $500 for the machine license, we tell them to negotiate with the machine provider and say, "If you want your machines in my restaurant, you can pay the $500." A lot of them will only pay half, so when we get a $500 a machine from, say, a restaurant, typically their out-of-pocket expense is 250. That's pretty standard with the gaming. They'll split it with, uh, the gaming company.
But we can survey, um, that's one of the things that I think the conferences frequently look at. Um, we can certainly survey what other towns are charging for those.
How many machines do we currently have, do we know?
I think about 50.
96, wow.
Okay.
How many?
96.
Thanks, Joy.
Wow.
You wouldn't know it.
Let's discuss, uh, raising that fee.
Yeah.
Especially if the businesses in Bartlett aren't funding some of it.
Yeah, we've talked about that a few times. In the beginning, we were really concerned with the fact that the state, um, you had to, you had to prove that, um, the village was absorbing extra costs involved in those per machine fees, and now they've totally loosened that up, and they don't pay attention to it at all, as far as I'm, I understand. Um, but you certainly don't want to get into a situation where you're over the top charging, but let's be in the middle at least. I know we're still lowest.
You know, then challenging that, but we can certainly take a look at that.
Well, even if we did increase the, the charge per machine, we would just take that extra revenue and put that into the BETA program, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't think there's any lack of people, or, lack of use for the BETA.
Yeah.
Certainly want to do that.
Yeah.
Mayor, you said that, uh, other villages are charging 1,000.
Well, she's going to do a review. We'll find out what the actual average is around here. I'm, I'm just, I don't talk to every, all of the mayors, but I know some of them are over 1,000, yeah, per machine.
Come a long way from, uh, 25.
Yeah, we were at $25 when it started.
So even though, failing like if it goes into the BETA program, could it also go into maybe other needed areas? Like I know one of our strategic goals is to help everyone in the village, like residents, understand all the services that we have, and I know, I thought it was great, all the emails that went out last year to businesses, because information was changing so quickly, um, and I was just kind of wondering, did things go out to, like, an individual resident? You know, and if we're trying to keep them up to date, maybe some of that could flow?
We have the email blast program, and we should, and that, that residents can sign up for individually, um, and I would think any additional, uh, gaming revenue, um, it goes into the general fund, um, and we would, um, like we have, give a number to the board and the EDC and have them vet that for, you know, how much you want to allocate to that, to, to BETA or, or a different source.
Just real quick, I made a note, Scott, because I'm sure not everybody understands what a 6B is, and we kind of cruised past that, just the 30,000-foot view, just so we know what happens on Cook County side.
Yeah, uh, when businesses come in, both industrial, non-industrial, one of the challenges we have in this community is being right in the center of, of Cook and DuPage. What a 6B does is it takes those Cook County taxes and really lowers them to that DuPage County level, making it feasible to, to do business.
So what we do is we pass a resolution, and you've done this a few times, you pass a resolution supporting that reduction in, or freezing of, um, their property, their Cook County, um, property tax for a period of 10 years, and, um, that, um, support then goes to Cook County Board, who actually grant that tax determined.
And then one last question. Have we, a number on the number of businesses that couldn't reopen?
You know what, to my, to my recollection, um, there might be, uh, there was a hair salon, I know, um, and then, I mean, it's hard to judge whether businesses closed down as a result of COVID. We had a dry cleaners that, that shut down, but they may have been struggling prior to that time. Um, we didn't, they just closed down, we didn't talk to them about it, so.
We usually probably be able to, um, peg that a little bit closer when we do business license renewals, too. But there hasn't been, like, I know, um, originally, there were some projections about But there hasn't been, like, I know originally there were some projections about, you know, thirty percent of your businesses aren't going to reopen. We are nowhere near that.
I didn't think so. And renewals are coming up in April or May? April, yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Separate department in the general fund is professional services. Matt, our assistant finance director, is going to go over the professional services department.
Half of this gets charged to the police pension fund and the other half gets charged here to professional services. I did increase the budget by a thousand dollars to account for a rate increase from last year. The next line item is professional planners. This has had no activity for the past few years, but this year we are requesting fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And this is for the unified development code update that Roberta and Paula discussed at the last meeting. So I believe the plan for this is to do this in two phases. So this budget will cover the first phase. So seventy-five percent of this is going to go here to professional services and twenty-five percent will get charged to the Brewster Creek Tiff. The next line item is legal services. This is where we charge our village's attorney fees. On page one twelve, there is a breakdown of the attorney fees, but we aren't anticipating any major changes for this upcoming year. So we are keeping the budget the same at three hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. And the attorney agreements will be going to the board for approval in May. Next line item is engineering services. This is where miscellaneous engineering fees get charged, so like miscellaneous traffic studies and projects that aren't charged to a specific project account. So the activity in this account just depends on the projects that come up during the year. But based on the history, we feel comfortable keeping the budget the same this year at sixty thousand. And the next line item is a new line item called social services. And we are requesting thirty thousand dollars. And this is for the part-time social worker that Chief Alrec discussed at the last meeting. So I won't go into any more detail on this right now. And then the last item is contingencies. We usually like to keep this consistent at twenty thousand dollars. I did want to point out that you can see the last few years have been over budgeted and this is due to the Spalding Road quiet zone expenditures. We don't budget for these because back in two thousand thirteen, we received a million dollars from CN. So we're just drawing down on that revenue. So we're just reducing our deferred revenue for this. So overall, professional services budget is up eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars or nineteen percent. And again, this is due to the unified development code updates and to the part-time social worker.
Let me ask about the social worker. Why is the social worker here rather than in the police budget?
I think the thinking was that anyone in the village will be able to use those services if needed.
Yeah, I think there's a component of some of those skills being used in coordinating with code enforcement when we have someone not able to be, not able to make a repair or not able, or in some kind of a hardship, a quarter situation comes to mind as well where there's another component of social services that we would utilize them for.
Makes sense.
And as they are professional, we figured professional services makes sense.
So we, if we had, I think from the last meeting, they were discussing the use of a social worker might take some of the burden off of the police services. Would we send a social worker out to a home without a police officer with them?
They're not back yet, are they?
Where's the chief when you need him?
I know, the chief is kicking off the Citizen Police Academy, but they will be here shortly. I do not think that we would send them out on a police call alone. This is really, I think, kind of on the backend. One of the concerns that the chief had brought to my attention was that we are having police sergeants following up with the various social service area organizations for a particular case. So some of that backend time, coordinating services, making sure that they do get the resources that they are needed, we shouldn't be using police officers who are running police services to actually do that. So that would shift over to the social service provider or social worker. I do not anticipate them going out on calls, but we can clarify that with the chief when he gets back.
Are we duplicating services that are already provided by the counties?
We're not. We spoke to, we are not providing those services.
Or would we be, I guess, if they...
No, we would not be providing those services. This is really more of the conduit piece that we find is missing.
And does the thirty thousand dollars encompass healthcare?
No, this is just a part-time...
That person, this person would not be eligible for any of those, that benefit package?
Yeah, I think with the increased social awareness of social health situations with the whole pandemic, I think the timing's perfect for somebody like this. It could take a lot of caseload off and free up some of the police officer's actual time. And you have an actual professional trained to handle those social or mental health situations versus the police officer. So it increases the safety of the village as well. Just a quick question on CN. I thought we had a certain amount of time to draw that down. Oh, we don't want to let CN...
They've been very cooperative.
Okay. Make that question.
All right, thank you, thank you, Matt. We're going to move on to the finance department then? The finance does, finance department does encompass the accounting, main office, utility billing, IT, GIS. And our utility billing is covered under public works budget, so they are in the finance department, but they're charged to public works. Same with the IT and the GIS functions, those are charged to central services fund, which we'll be talking about later. Our budget does include a seven percent increase mainly due to filling of the accounting position most of the way through last year. We're also expecting more auditing services being required due to the CARES Act money, other COVID-related grant funds. I think it's already been mentioned tonight, but GIS staff is looking to purchase a drone and that would be used for mapping and providing aerials for development review. IT is also planning to continue its computer replacement program where they replace one-third of the desktops and a server responsible for recording police calls and radio traffic. And that will also be through the central services budget, which we'll be looking at later tonight. As far as some of our short-term goals, I think Scott already covered, some that I was going to cover as far as GIS and the mapping for dining and COVID information. Our Brewster Creek Business Park, we worked on extending that, their budget so they could finish the build-out of the Brewster Creek Business Park. Another short-term goal was assisting with public works as far as IPA loan for the wastewater treatment plant. As far as long-term goals, we are starting a pilot program for reading water meters with fixed antenna. We just started that this last month. IT department has been assisting with the work-from-home transition policy as far as employees go with that regard. They also did a lot of work behind the scenes on our online meetings and our public meetings. Going on to the highlights, another highlight was in regard to our refunding of the DuPage Water Commission loan. I think that was one of our successful highlights for the department. And IT staff has continued to focus on security for the village's networks. I know that's been in the news a lot lately. They also installed a new backup system, disaster recovery. So that's not a thing that we see, but we hope that we never see or have to hear about those in the news. As far as our financial summary, there are no changes in staffing this year. Activities remained just about the same as prior years. There are no personnel requests or capital. Again, capital will be in the central services budget, which we'll be going over later. Professional development is basically the same. We go to the state conference and miscellaneous seminars that are local. We've done a lot of online training, webinar training, which has been helpful to keep those costs down. Associations were just a part of the national government finance association and then the state chapter. Our line item detail, you can see where our personnel is up nine percent due to adding a full year for an accountant position. And then down, the next section shows where our single audit increased forty-seven thousand for the budget. That's, so when you receive over a certain amount of money in federal funds, then a single audit is required. So we're expecting a single audit for the next few years. And OPAB, that's our other post-employment benefits, we are also required to do a full calculation on our costs of those. Other than that, there's not a lot, not much, not too many exciting things in the finance department. We try to keep things level. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those questions this time.
For the drone, what was done before? How was it, did we have to outsource or how did they...
Yeah, we don't have a drone right now and the one that the police department has, we are not, we cannot use that for non-police activities since it was purchased with equitable sharing funds. And Chris will get into that later. He's actually going to talk about the drone and what the use is for. And I think we have time for Chris to go over central services.
I think while Chris gets situated there, I will talk a little bit about two of my favorite things that GIS has done this year. One is the development, current development web application. Talk about getting information to residents in real time on the status of developments and that they see, you know, cropping up, you know, their status, what they are, some really nice renderings of what they will be. So I think it's a nice thing to have. We have seventeen active developments, so that map is hopping. The other thing that I love that GIS put together with public works department is, and I really geeked out over this, I'm almost embarrassed, but they developed a dashboard and maps to provide information about different infrastructure, but specifically water main breaks, where they are, how old they are, how old's the pipe, what kind of pipe it is, lots of information, how much information, how much money is spent on overtime, how we repair them, how quickly we repair them. It was a real deep dive into that and that helps us plan better on where we're going to be doing sewer work and replacing mains. So it kind of all comes together in that program as a great illustration of how to use GIS to make better informed decisions. And I just, I'm sure Dan will talk about it later, but it's one of my favorite things from this year. I'm the geek. Go ahead, Chris.
All right, well, thank you, thank you trustees for allowing me to review the central services budget with you tonight. For those, I mean, I know...
Manning the Zoom. The Zoom is unmanned.
Flying, flying with that nut.
As most of you know, with central services, I'm just going to quickly review real quick. Central services is that fund that's used to account for things that aren't easily attributable to any single department. You know, everything from cleaning services to HVAC maintenance on buildings to the printing of the Bart letter. Just, it encompasses a wide range of things. It also includes the staff in GIS. The other thing that it also encompasses is our equipment replacement fund. This fund was created over twenty years ago, but it was designed as kind of a pay-as-you-go fund where when we buy specific equipment or certain software, we decide what an estimated life for that is. And then every year, we put aside a certain amount of money so by the time that equipment is ready for replacement, we're not having to dig into the general fund. That money's already been set aside to replace that equipment. So it's supposed to kind of even out our expenditures over time. So real quick, I'll get into each of it. We'll start with the equipment replacement. As Todd had already mentioned, we're looking at replacing a third of our desktop computers. These are on a four-year replacement cycle. I know it's weird to do a third every four years. We skip a fourth year. They used to be on a three-year cycle. We extended it to a four, so that's where we go with that. Item number two is that server for the police department. Again, it's just reaching that age when it needs, and it's an important server of the police, all incoming calls, in case they ever have to go back to those. Number three is something we've been, I've been trying to get Roberta to agree to for a while, which is actually replacing their very, very old copier. So she's finally agreed to it this year. Number four is a large format scanner. It's the only scanner that the entire village owns. We use it for copying plans, for scanning in plans. So it's quite, it's quite expensive, but it's also quite important to us. Number five is the GIS license. I mean, these are licenses that are needed to use the software. We've been really pushing to expand the use of GIS in other departments and this is part of that push. And number six, the drone. So the drone is, it's going to be serving multiple purposes. It'll be a drone that's available to all the departments, not just, maybe not PD because they won't share theirs. But no, it'll be available to all the departments. One of the things we, you know, I often, when I come to board meetings and I see aerials that are used for upcoming developments, those aerials are oftentimes very old. And it's hard to gauge what's really going on in the area when you're looking at old aerials. So one of the ideas was, we'd really like to have a drone just so we can provide up-to-date aerials of projects that come before the board and things that you're needing to do. The other use, you know, the administration had actually considered budgeting for a drone and said, look, let's just combine our efforts. And, you know, economic development promotion. You know, to be able to do some of those videos, flybys that we've hired other people to do, we can do those ourselves. So this is to purchase the drone, the software, to provide the FAA licensing because we have to be licensed and the training for staff.
Is it going to be trained in that?
Yeah, we're taking, actually, the College of the Page has a in-person training for how to fly the drone. And there's an online course you take to get your FAA certification. So there'll be a couple of staff members in administration and both of our GIS staff will be doing it. I will not. I don't need to fly the drone.
And of the five thousand, it's a software and license?
Yeah, so, you know, at least now that costs a software. You know, the software is needed for programming the drone for, you know, you have to program the flight. We don't actually hand-fly it for most of the time for the mapping portions. It's a very determined line it flies and it takes, you know, pictures at every certain increment at every specific angle, so it's very...
Will that license need to be renewed every year?
There's options. So we're looking at both options. You know, it can be a better deal to do a subscription and most software companies are moving towards subscription anyway. The advantage is, is you're not, you're getting all the changes as it comes along. It is not going to be five thousand per year. So that I can tell you.
Because I think every time you have to hire somebody to do that type of work, it's ten or fifteen thousand.
It can be quite expensive though. Oh, yeah. I mean, we don't hire, we rely upon the counties to fly over, but the problem is, you know, we're in multiple counties, they don't fly over the same years and you end up...
They're not going to give you a lot of...
So this is something we're hoping to address.
And real quick before, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I can see the utility of the drone, but I'd also like to see if we could come up with creative uses, creative ways maybe offset the cost.
Okay.
There's a, you know, if we could charge for use. If we're doing the, if we're making the video...
That's sort of been in terms of development and marketing.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I was just looking for, it's just clarification for me. On the replacement of the desktop computers, you said you were breaking this up and ruling them in over a three-year period of time, so a third of them?
Well, yes, we, so-
Because we're not going to-
The desktops, we replace a third of the desktops every, every four years.
Right. So it's a 57,000 is for one year?
Yeah.
And then next year, there'll be another-
Yeah, and this is actually maybe a little more than a third. It doesn't quite break out to be exactly a third, so yes, this is a third, 57,000 for a third of our desktops and monitors. All right, if there's no other questions, I'll just quickly go through. There's really professional development. Really, nothing's changed. It includes technical training for the GIS and technical staff. Unfortunately, those classes are expensive, but as you know, technology is constantly changing, so we strive to keep up with it. Professional associations, really isn't much to talk about. And then, real quick, I'll just point out the highlights for any significant changes. You'll notice that service agreements, it says it's going up by 26%. It's actually probably going to go up about half of that percentage. But one of the, the reason it's going up is, we're, one of the goals identified in the overall village strategic plan was to, was to complete an IT master plan or a village-wide technology plan. And the idea of this plan, which we haven't done since 1999, believe it or not, and I was here then, was, is to kind of have somebody, some professionals come out and work with us to, you know, kind of look at all of our departments' use of technology or not use of technology, and look for ways that we might better use what we have. Other technologies might assist us in providing better services to our constituents. Look at how our IT department's structured, the way it is, and whether or not it'll be to support those things long-term. And then to basically help us come up with an implementation plan over multiple years to kind of make these changes.
So we have a scope of work document coming from Northern Illinois University to help us do that. Technology analysis and evaluate how we're using technology, can we better use our technology, and what going forward should we be planning for? And a number of these plans that we looked at were really inward-focused. They were about your IT governance, they were about your policies, and we're really in good shape in terms of that internal stuff. And so we really asked them to look at this outward-facing. How does our technology improve our services? How, how does, how approachable is our technology to people in the community having access and using it? And it's something that we're very excited about. It's a, you know, as you can see, technology is a big part of every department. And this IT master plan will encompass everyone, including the police department. And of course, you know the kind of technology that is in a squad car, how it talks to the, you know, the rest of the department, and so it's vast, and we're looking forward to bringing that to you for review. I think it's coming April 6th.
Does that include, like, looking for redundancies, like software that might overlap that you could combine or?
To some small extent. I mean, and again, as Paula mentioned, you know, a lot of times, the IT, these IT policies are really kind of coming in, they're super IT-focused, and what's your policy for this? What's your governance for this? And I told Paula, I said, look, you know, we're a tiny department. I mean, it's me, John, and the GIS staff. I mean, we're tiny. It's, you know, I think if we're going to do something like this, what we really need to be focused on is how can we better utilize the technology within our departments to really provide better services? And that's what I think our money's best spent. I mean, sure, you know, I have no problem with them. I mean, but for us to know which, I mean, I know what software runs on every computer. We're that small. We don't need, you know, a huge inventory list and an inventory of hardware. It's just, it's not that big. So I want to make sure that when we, and Paula is completely on board, when we do this plan, we're really focused on how can we prove the services in every department to those that we provide services to.
You know, I think that's like the core, where the starting point would be for better PR and communications, the very core. Good.
Awesome.
Unless there's any other questions, that's, that's all I got.
I wish they were all as short as central services.
Hey, Chris, I'm page 18. Can we take a look at that? Very next page.
I'm sorry, I didn't pick that up, trustee Carbonaro. Oh, page 18, sure.
Page 18, first item on the page. Why, why is this in-
Unemployment benefits?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, for that matter, why don't we put the grass cutting in here too? Doesn't it belong in finance?
No.
Why?
Because it's one of those things that is covered for every department. It's kind of, again, the central services is kind of accounting for those things that you don't account for. So rather than charging every department for their unemployment insurance, we use central services to account for all of the village's unemployment. I mean, if you wanted it at a different account, certainly it's an accounting thing, so it certainly could be, but that's, I think that's historically why it's been there.
I don't, I don't really think it belongs there. It's part of finance. I mean, yes, the rates are going to go up and down depending on usage, but it doesn't belong in central services. Yes, everybody uses it, but it's a finance thing.
We, this is Todd. We do, the finance director, we, we have charges come from all the different funds, water, sewer, and typically, our unemployment has been very small, especially this year when almost all the unemployment is being covered by, by the CARES Act and other COVID fundings. But we can, we can look at that, but typically, it hasn't been the $10,000. I know this year, we, we've had a couple issues that we're looking at due to the unusual circumstances, but we can, I-
I think it's just easier. Instead of having a separate line item for every department, it's going to be under the same account number anyway. It's the same GL number. So instead of having a separate line item for every department, you just put it in one place, right?
Yes, that's right. It's appropriate to put it here. It does work for us here in the central services.
Does that answer your question, trustee Carbonaro?
Not really.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. And for that, I will, I suppose we will call that quits for right now. We got through quite a bit there. So what we'll do is we'll adjourn the committee, and then we'll take a two-minute break. Everybody wants a two-minute break, and then we'll come back and open up the board meeting. So with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move to-
Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Hopkins with a quick please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for March 16, 2021. Again, I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please again call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Present.
Danny?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Present.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. I believe in the interest, let's see, okay, I just want to make sure I got the right ones checked off here. Administration, Finance, and Central Services, right? Okay. First item on our committee this evening is under building and zoning, Chairman Ranky. Actually, I had spoken with Chairman Ranky for reasons beyond his control, he has to recuse himself, so I requested that that chair be changed to Chairman Danny. Chairman Danny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a discussion to discuss the petitioner's request and potentially forward to the Plan Commission for further review. And Roberta, if you would be so kind.
Certainly. So tonight, the petitioner is requesting to amend the Bluff City Industrial Park preliminary PUD plan and general site plan to allow for wood products production and the outdoor storage of materials such as wood chips and mulch. They are also requesting to amend ordinance 2003-103, and more specifically, exhibits E and H, which are the previously mentioned plans, to reflect the proposed use. Special use permits are also being requested to allow wood products production and for the storage of uncontained bulk materials. The final PUD plan for the nine-acre site identifies multiple material stockpiles, a fabric storage area, a portable toilet with wash station, and vehicle equipment parking. The stockpiles will not exceed 25 feet in height, and they will be routinely moved. Each mulch stockpile will also be completely reduced annually so as not to decompose on the subject property. The hours of operation are 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. However, noise generating activities, such as the production equipment, will not occur before 7:00 AM or 8:00 AM on Saturdays to match the construction hours that we permit here in the village. The existing eight-foot-tall landscape berm provides screening from Gifford Road, and there is an existing six-foot-tall chain-link fence that will remain on the property along the east property line. So this location is what we're talking about right here. Our village's environmental consultant has reviewed the proposed use and has submitted recommendations to the staff that we will incorporate into our report that goes to the Plan Commission. Petitioners are here tonight, so if you have any very specific questions, they can answer those for you.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
How much, how much wood chips and how much mulch are we talking here?
Good evening, Mr. President, trustees. My name's Charles Murphy. I'm the petitioner. As far as the volume of material, the piles will have probably around 2,000 to 2,500 yards per pile, and it'll be in a segregated fashion from logs to just chips. Say we get logs from the Village of Bartlett or chips, they're in different piles, and then they're in a form of production to make a size reduction for a certain-sized product, and then for preparation for sale.
What's the closest residential house to this site?
There aren't any within our sight.
It's approximately 1,000 feet to the south. So in between that, let me go back. You'll see there is a, this is a very tall, I'd say 20-foot to 22-foot tall berm, and this area here is an existing asphalt recycling shingle facility, and there is a very large stockpile there that's actually 50 feet tall that will also buffer this use.
Have we had any complaints about noise from that current facility?
Not to my knowledge.
And there's a quarry, the pile of stone, I guess, to the west.
This is the mining facility.
75 feet high or whatever.
All the questions I have.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. When it says that you accept wood chips from municipalities like Bartlett and tree companies, what does that mean? Like, they're coming as chips, or you're accepting, like, large pieces of wood that get broken down?
Well, both. Bartlett brings, and this is, Bartlett brings in their chips to us that they grind up, they'll do tree trimming work and so forth, and then they chip that material on the street into a truck, and then they come dump that material with us, as well as they bring in big logs that are bigger than what their chipper will handle, so.
Is there, like, is that a cost, like, to who brings it in? Or do you pay?
It's $30 a load for chips or a load of logs, so it's quite cheap, frankly, but.
Yeah, I think it's a good use for that little corner.
Yeah. Consider what's there now.
So what's the difference how some mulch smells? And like, would there be like a scent, like washing?
There's not, there's traditionally a premium bark mulch, which is something that's normally brought in from the south, from the furniture business and industry that does a lot of tree reclamation and scraping of the bark off of those trees. And they bring that up the river, it comes into Lamont, and that's sold as is. That has a much more odor, odiferous, odorless smell than, than this does. This is pretty plain jane, it's freshly ground wood, and, you know, then it goes through a process of, as it's either dyed, colored, or into piles, preparation, but it doesn't have a, an odor at this, at this point.
Do you have the dyes at your facility here?
Yes.
Are they all natural dyes?
Yes, all natural. We've submitted information on the dyes into the package, a photo, I don't know if that's available, but it's a self-contained unit. Everything's in there, it goes through there, and it goes out on a conveyor, and it's stockpiled. There's no, no outside preparation done.
This product is for sale to what?
Residential and commercial customers.
So a resident could come to your facility and purchase it there, or they'd have to order it online, or how would that?
It's available online through our online services, as well as would be available at the facility. Not this facility isn't retail. Our retail facility is down the street on Spalding Road, which is Elgin.
Right.
Will retail sales happen here? Is this taxable?
Not, not direct retail. It would be potentially the bulk sale material as the bigger, the bigger semis, we're trying to keep traffic to a minimum from this location. So it's intended, we process here and we deliver semi-loads of material to our retail sites as well as customers.
Is there a reason that this has to go to plan?
Yes, special use permits-
Okay.
-for our public hearing.
Okay. All right.
I'm good with it all.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
If there are no more questions, then we'll forward this on to the Plan Commission for further review and conduct the required public hearing. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Chairman Danny, for filling in for Chairman Ranky.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Next item we have on our agenda this evening is our return to our budget review, Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Danny.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. We'll, I'm going to ask that, we do golf first. Are we done with administration?
We are done with administration, yes. Golf will be up.
Done, right?
Golf and Public Works, I think, is all we have left.
Let's do golf next.
Thank you for allowing us, three of us, to present the budget to you tonight. I will start by presenting the golf forum of the budget, and we'll go through some of the golf, maybe highlights on the four committees. Then go over my IT field report. There are any questions? After I'm done with mine, we will turn over the Robinson Park course of the budget tomorrow.
Superintendent Matt Girmack here. Oh, that's a little better. Did everyone catch that?
Yep. As, as we all know, we are a 18-hole facility here in Bartlett, owned by the town. We average about 32,000 rounds a year over the course of time. We have served as the host of pretty much every Bartlett-affiliated civic golf outing, including the Chamber, the Bartlett Rotary, the Lions Club, pretty much every youth sports organization in town here. We also offer a daily hole-in-one contest at the, at the golf course with an opportunity to win $10,000 with a, with a hole-in-one on our signature 18-hole. Going forward, obviously, last year was a year wrought with challenges for us. About this time last year, we were forced by the state to, to close down. Golf was deemed unnecessary or unsafe at that point, despite our, us disagreeing with that vehemently. Going forward, we look forward to a continued surge in, in golf. Once we were able to open last year, we had, had a great year in, in the golf department. Once people figured out that golf was a very safe activity to do outside, and they could social distance properly, we benefited from that. Play was up about 15% last year. Going forward in this year, we look, we look like forward to hosting all the previous events we used to have, all our, all our civic outings and golf leagues and things like that. As, when we opened last year, we spent countless hours on the phone in April with our professional associations, trying to get them to, to allow golf to be- associations, trying to get them to allow golf to be played to varying levels of success. Part of that was we spent all that time on the phone contacting pretty much every golfer on our, in our database, leagues, permanent tee times player, permanent tee time players, because we weren't allowed to have anybody in the golf shop for most of the year last year. So all of our, all of our play that had to be prepaid before walking into the golf shop and that held on until about July. Going forward into some of our line items here, if we go to personnel request, I have no, no requests for personnel. Capital outlay, we are looking at buying a new golf simulator. We are putting a new simulator room into the, into our golf shop, a complete redesign of the golf shop this year. We feel that a simulator is going to create endless more revenue than trying to sell golf shirts in a area where merchandising, the golf business is trending more and more towards big box and online. So we feel that's a tremendous opportunity. I want to give a shout out to Dan Dingus and the crew. They did a, they did the build out on our simulator room. It is done exceptionally well. We're very excited about it going forward. Next in my line items would be professional development. There are no changes there as well. Professional association, there's going to be no changes. Couple of line items that I wanted to touch on that did go up substantially. Service agreements did go up. The main reason for that is going to be in addition to purchasing the simulator that's going to go in our permanent room, we plan on leasing a second simulator for about four months in the winter season to provide that atmosphere where they have two golf simulators in our bar and create an atmosphere where can, you know, groups of people come out, watch a sporting event. And the other line item that went way up was bank charges. The reason that went up is everyone that played and booked tee times online was required to prepay. So our credit, amount of credit card uses went through the roof and that will, that will continue going forward. We were very fortunate last year, our golf course was in tremendous demand. Our online booking page got 80,000 views last year as opposed to a market average of about 45,000 and we did 4,000 rounds that were booked on our website versus a market average of 2,000. Any questions for me?
So to lease the second one during the winter is what, 8,000?
I'm sorry.
To lease the second simulator, how much is that? Is that the?
In a four month, it's about $2,000 a month, yes.
Okay, 2,000.
And we would anticipate revenues, around 20,000 for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's going to be exciting to see, I don't know, those of you, those of us that aren't real big golfers, simulators are just going crazy, especially you can take advantage of a permanent one because when people aren't able to play, they sit around and wait to see if the course will open and a lot of them will want to just go ahead and play the simulator so they can swing and that gives us more beverages and food in the clubhouse.
I anticipate rain delays, people will play especially in the mornings. We have frost delays a lot of times early and late in the season that that will get utilized and obviously in the winter months, especially in the evenings with leagues and things that it will be, it will be booming for sure.
So will we track like the usage on that rental one? Like at some point, would there be a need for two?
Originally, the idea was to buy two. As we thought about it, you know, it just made more sense to purchase one at first and then we'll see.
Totally understand that.
Test the water on having two. Evenings are where you're going to have both of your simulators going to be full. It's the daytime where you don't know where you're going to have both of those full and so we'll have to see on that. I would hope so. I'd love to buy another one, yeah, but would love to see those numbers allow us to buy another one for sure.
Anyone else? I just want to make the comment, you know, I play golf out there quite a bit and.
No.
You think, you think? But compared, and I have a number of buddies that play in other courses around the area and I have to tell you that Phil, really my, you deserve a lot of credit for the way you kept this club running in comparison to some of the other clubs considering what we went through with the COVID and how you worked with all the people, all of the permanent people, all of the residents that played out there. This man did an outstanding job there last year compared to what I've seen and heard about in the other clubs. So thank you very much for the effort you put forth, Phil.
I'm just doing my job and I appreciate the sentiment. Thank you very much. Thank you.
A lot of other people were doing their job too, but it didn't equal what you did out there.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. We'll turn it over to the grounds department.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Like Phil said, my name is Matt Germack and I will be going over the grounds maintenance budget. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me at any time and I would be happy to answer them. We will start with grounds personnel requests and we have none. So to the next page. The next page is capital outlay requests. The first item is for two triplex mowers. They're for triplex mowers on our green complexes. They're part of the vehicle replacement fund and they were not requested last year. Our current two triplexes that we have now, they are from 1999. They have exceeded their life expectancy by 11 years and besides for having some maintenance difficulties, they are not equipped with ROPS, which is a big safety issue. If the machine rolls over while you're mowing it or something around the greens, not having ROPS is very dangerous for the operator. There's a lot of slopes around the greens, bunkers, so that operator is making a pass, turning, making a pass, turning. So having the ROPS is a big safety issue. These newer mowers, they have a lower noise level of these riding mowers, so it will allow us, they will allow us to conform to local noise regulations on holds four, five, seven, 12, 13 and 14. So our current mowers, the decibels at your ear level is 87 decibels, which is like, you compare it to if you're mowing your lawn or anything, you're mowing your lawn at your house, you hear that noise, it's very loud sometimes. These newer mowers, the decibels are 73 decibels at your ear. So 73 decibels is compared to like a dishwasher or a blow dryer. So it's very quiet, especially if the houses are 30 yards away or something, they're barely going to hear these mowers. So that's a really good benefit. There's also no hydraulic fluid and it utilizes all electric components for traction, steering, lifting and cutting. The no hydraulics is a major benefit of these units just due to the fact when you're mowing a green or anything, hydraulic fluids are very hot obviously and if your mower has hydraulics going to the steering, the mowing, the reels, if a leak occurs in the morning when we're mowing at 5:30, that leak you can't see. So that operator is going to keep mowing and mowing and mowing and it's going to be leak after leak after leak if he catches it or when he catches it. So all those areas may obviously die because the oil's hot. So these new mowers are all electric, so the chance of a leak is basically eliminated, which is a huge benefit because the greens are our most important piece of playing surface, I believe, at the golf course. So that's another good benefit and the battery assistance should be 20% more fuel efficient, they say, so save a little money on gas too. The second item is for a spare set of cutting units for these mowers. The greens mowers are used daily and a spare set of cutting units allows for no downtime when reels break or need service or anything, so that's also a big benefit.
How long do you expect these, oh, sorry. How long do you expect these mowers to last?
So yeah, at least 10 to 15 years with these new mowers, we would expect them to last.
Is there like a warranty? How do we?
Yeah, they give a warranty, but it's not more than two to three years, but keeping the service on the machines, you'd expect at least 15, 15 years.
You're in the hot seat because Kevin Meders will be answering these questions.
Our full-time mechanic Dennis takes care of our machinery too and that's the big reason why, not to interject, but it lasts so long.
Does, how often are the greens mowed?
Greens are mowed daily.
So each green is mowed daily and typically we'd have to have all of them mowed by the first tee time and peak hours of the summer would be, what is the first tee time, 5:45 or 6:00 AM?
6:30 during the week and then 5:50 on the weekend. You know, far up out in front of play.
Yeah.
Then we have, we have some noise ordinances, noise ordinances. We have to avoid certain holes, so we have to avoid hole four, five.
I'm just wondering if it's possible to buy one and use one of the old ones for the non-noise areas for right now?
Yeah, that's definitely an option.
It just seems like buying both of them at the same time, I'm sure there's, I would imagine, do we have two people operating those at the same time?
Yeah, we have two people operating.
That's a pretty technical thing to operate.
Yes, correct.
You mess up the greens, it's a bad, bad thing, it's expensive.
Yeah, there's a lot of newer technologies too on these new mowers. So when you're setting the mowers, you're setting to a height in the shop, say an eighth of an inch, you're setting the height at. But once you go out there, there's a lot of factors that affect the height you're mowing at. How your pressure, weight of the machine, weight of the reels, the pressure that the mower is pushing down on the ground. So having two different machines, you're setting your height at eighth of an inch per se, but your two different machines are going to be cutting at different heights. So your consistency from green to green, if you're using two different machines, is going to differ. So on the first green, if you mow with a newer machine, that green may be a little faster due to the newer technology. Then on the second green, you're mowing with an older machine, it's a different technology, you might be at a slower green speed.
Matt, are those mowers that we're talking about, can you explain the roll bar on that?
Oh, yeah. So the roll bar, if you're driving your machine, it's going over the top of the machine. So if you're mowing and if you turn the machine too fast or you hit a bump or something and it tips, that roll bar will protect, protect you from, when you tumble, from having the machine kind of fall on top of you.
Takes you from being crushed by the machine.
Yeah, that's a good way to say it.
Let me ask you a question about, I'm sorry, are you done, Paul?
Yes.
Let me ask you a question about, you know, I want to hitchhike off what the mayor talked about, two machines. I would think though, if we had two machines, just thought that that may restrict the amount of tournaments we would have there, wouldn't you think? Because we have different length greens.
You don't want that. That is, that is one of the common complaints in golf course conditions.
That's what I'm asking.
If a player goes out and that's one of the things they'll say is, gosh, you know, some of the greens are bad, some are slow, that's really a known.
How much do you think we can get from the old ones?
You'd get like a roughly a $2,000 trade-in value. Wouldn't be much.
There's a lot of desperate courses out in the down, downstate area.
Out west.
Yeah.
Have there, have there been any, any accidents with any, any of our older mowers?
Not at our golf course, but down the road at, I won't say the name, but an operator was operating the machine, it tipped and the operator passed away. So it does happen.
You mean south down 59, that one, down there?
No. It wasn't at San Diego.
It wasn't? Okay.
It was a private.
Okay. That was the only question I had. It sounds like it's necessary.
All right, next page. The next page is.
And Phil, you're going to guarantee that the simulator is going to pay for one of those in the first year, right?
Yes.
All right.
The next page is professional development. We have an increase of just $200 for this page. Just attending a couple more local meetings. Next page is professional association detail. It's the same as last year, there's no changes.
You know, I hate to be a, like a denier of our education, but is it really necessary to go to San Diego for a trade show when we aren't selling that much materials in the clubhouse any longer? What do we benefit from the trade show?
So at the trade show, usually go three to four days and from about 8 till 4, you're going to seminars taught by university professors from Cornell, Wisconsin, University of Minnesota.
What are they teaching? Is it greenskeeping?
Yeah, it's all about greenskeeping, agronomics.
Okay, that makes sense.
There was research that's coming out from the universities on fungicide and water management and kind of how your club can save money using these new technologies and stuff.
I would guess that this year would be worth it. Is our new greenskeeper in here tonight? Oh, yeah, it is. But is, is it like something that we could take one year and then skip because it seems like it doesn't go, the information isn't new all the time, right? I mean, it's.
The information, information's always evolving, but it's something we could look into for sure.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
And then line item detail, we have just an increase of 1%. Some of the bigger ones would be the regular salaries. Kevin DeRue, the former superintendent retired, it's down 13%. And kind of tree maintenance, we kind of increased that a little bit. We have 3,000 trees on the golf course, they're aging. We have 125 silver maples that are about 100 years old. They're getting old, large limbs are falling every storm. So we're going to have to start doing something about that just due to safety issues. Any questions?
A lot about having the, getting the public works department out of the brush business and working on trees throughout the village. Is this something that the public works is equipped to handle?
Yeah, they've been helping, helping with us for sure.
But still a 100% increase?
Yeah, there's trees that are around greens that are, that are massive that you're going to have climbers come up. You can't just drop the trees because if you drop it, it's around greens, you don't want to drop it on a green.
Yeah, no, no.
You have to come in and limb it down, bring it down from the top.
You should see the trees they took down last year around, it was green at eight and nine.
Yeah, they're.
Amazing, the size of those trees and you couldn't even tell that they, they had cut them. You know, it's just amazing to me. By the way, I'm going to tell you right now, that tree on 15 on the tee box along the homes.
You've already.
That, that branch has to come out of there.
Yeah. And some of it gets dangerous, especially with the ice and stuff that you get. I guess one of my questions when I was asking about greenskeepers is, it doesn't have so much to do with this as it does personnel. I know for, for years we were asking Kevin about the farm team, so do we, are you grooming somebody then to replace you at some point down the road?
Yeah, we could work on that for sure. We have somebody on staff now.
There's somebody on staff that can go through the training and everything else?
Correct.
Before you leave tonight, I'd like to get a firm commitment that that limb is coming out of 15.
We can talk about it.
We'll talk about it?
Can I ask your feelings on the pine trees in the bunker at 15?
Yeah, that's another, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, that's a tree request. Mayor, you bring a good point up about conferences and I think this is probably true in every department. We don't always go every year. I don't remember the last time I've been to a national conference. A number of the conferences are either going to be virtual again this year, which is a great bargain for training staff. We were able to train, you know, four times more people, taking advantage of a virtual conference that didn't take them out of the office for several days, like the old format. So I think we'll be seeing more virtual conferences happening. They're in the budgets for evaluation, but it doesn't always mean we go.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Under equipment maintenance, it looks like it went, it went up there. So would that be the same if, if the new mowers or what other equipment exists for a golf course?
Yeah, we have 133 pieces of equipment at the golf course. So all of our pieces of equipment are getting older, so just due to their age, it's increasing to fix them. So even with the two new mowers, it's probably a good number.
What are some of the other equipment? I'm sorry, I'm not a golfer.
Yeah, we have track, we have tractors out there, six tractors. We have fairway mowers, tee mowers, utility golf carts, push mowers, weed whackers, backpack blowers.
All right, so like the, like the smaller mowers even to get closer to something.
Correct.
Stephanie, have you been out to the golf course?
Oh, I've seen it. Beautiful.
Years ago, remember, you had a tour, TL, remember, took you out there?
Okay.
Matt, good luck. You have some big shoes to fill with Kevin. So I wish you the best of luck, buddy.
Thank you.
And the new puppy is settling in okay? He's not a puppy anymore, he's what, two, three years old?
Two years old now, she's doing good. Keeps the geese away.
Just so you know, we have an actual dog out there that's there all the time and it's really worth it because.
We have a mascot.
Keeps the geese away.
Keeps the geese away.
Oh, that's a great.
Yeah.
If you're done, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. I'm happy to present to you the food and beverage budget for Bartlett Hills Golf Club after, after 20 years of being here, a most unique year to go ahead and navigate through to say the least. I just want to go back a little bit towards those budget highlights because I think there's four or five things we should probably point out that we did and some accomplishments that we're very proud of. and, uh, some accomplishments that, uh, we're, we're very proud of. Um, as of the writing of this budget, we, uh, had 48 weddings on the books for 2021, which were seven more than from 2020. Uh, and that was up significantly from 27 and 28 the two years before. Uh, unfortunately, it, it didn't work out that way exactly. We have been able to, uh, retain 16 of those weddings that continued on with us through our perseverance and follow-up, and being, uh, straightforward, and helping people analyze the situation, everything. So 16 have continued with us. We are still, uh, sitting right here at 40 weddings left so far on the books for, uh, for the year we've got going into. Um, uh, we are anxiously waiting, I think it came out yesterday, that the governor's going to analyze the phase five opening sometime before Friday this week. And that'll kind of bring us up from our 50-person minimum, up to hopefully, uh, a different stage, getting towards 100 and full, full occupancy at some point soon. Um, staff over the off-season, um, to go ahead and compensate for what we had going on. We made a video tour of the facility, which is available on our website, that allowed people to go ahead and come by and take a look. And, uh, Evan did a nice job of hosting that, to get them in the facility and actually see it. We did a lot of curbside drive-up taste testings for potential brides and other parties, uh, which worked out well, and it was much appreciated. Throughout the year, we came up with 26 special events, through, uh, prime rib nights and fish fries, and the holiday drive-through and whatever. Uh, serving about 2,000 dinners, and making about $50,000, uh, by keeping Bartlett Hills Golf Club pertinent, and thinking there's always something going on over there. Uh, we always try to do our duty as far as to support the local, local population, the charities, the fundraisers, the sports, and whatever we could do. And that was one way we found to do that, and it was effective, and was much, much appreciated from the comments we got. Um... Probably the other thing that should be pointed out besides, uh, the, the constant staff effort of communicating with people with the ongoing questions, and what's your capacity, what's your policy, that was a full two-person job all year long, trying to just keep up with that, and try to make sure those, those events keep booking. I think we're, one of the most things we're proud of, getting the Best in the Nod Award for the third year in a row, which is the highest credited wedding magazine, website, whatever you want to call. And that also qualified us for the hot, uh, Nod Hall of Fame, which puts us in the top 1% of nationwide reception venues. So, we're very proud of that, and, uh, Evan and staff have done a really great job. We got a, a great chef to go ahead and back everything up over there right now. So, uh, I just wanted to point those few things out going forward. Uh, we're hoping for opening up full, full board, and doing the stuff that we do again, uh, correctly real soon. Uh, going through the actual budget sheets themselves, under personnel requests of the restaurant, we're not requesting anything, no capital outlay this year. Basset and food handling cer-, certifications, we're now having to do them for both online, I mean, on-premise and off-premise at the same time. It's $19.95 for people to do online, good for three years, along with food handling permit. Uh, uh, there is no professional association detail. We have so much insight from all the wedding publications and the, uh, all, all, all their websites and the webinars and everything going out. We can go to four or five of them every week and keep up to date with what everybody's doing, what the current trends are, uh, without spending any money on doing any of that. So, we take advantage of that to, to a large degree. Uh, under restaurant, the biggest thing is they're going to stand out over in there, somewhat similar to golf, the incre-, increased credit card usage, because the handling of money was, was, uh, kept to a minimum for a long amount of time. And the large amount of material and supplies, both for the current year and for the stuff going forward, between to-go supplies, mask cleaning, and all the COVID-related items, that, uh, there was no way to get around that. Uh, line items, I certainly can answer any questions, but those certainly should back up the, uh, detail that you see in front of you. Uh, going to banquet, we're requesting no capital outlay again. Uh, the same basset and food handling certifications is under restaurant. Uh, under banquet, you can see that, you know, there's going to be just differences involved based on, uh, the dollars spent, uh, last year, with minimal events that we had versus what we're projecting to do with over 140 events, if all goes well for the year coming forward. Uh, line items for banquet, uh, to back that up. Midway, uh, was a little cash cow for us for the year. Uh, we made a record midway sales of 129,000, that's up like 5% from any previous high. And, uh, this year, we're aiming at 6% above that, because we're going to expand the menu, work on grilling down at the midway more, and add on some liquor and additional craft beer selections down there to get that average check up a little bit higher. Uh, so with golf doing a good job and booming with people outside, uh, we might as well keep taking advantage of that opportunity down at the midway. Uh, that's, that's really it for us. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Hey, Paul, did we, um, did we fix our copier for the banquet?
Sir, the copier is, uh, is being used as we speak.
Awesome, awesome. And you, um, even if you get to open up to full capacity, are you still going to do the, uh, the prime rib dinners on the weekends?
You know what, we're going to, we, we, what we are going to do if we're open for full capacity, there's going to be invariably a few weddings or a few days that people are going to cancel because their counts are reduced, or there, there's less people going to attend, or whatever. The prime rib night's going to be a great fit in to go ahead and do those, even on the last minute, uh, you know, if, if we can get 100 dinners thrown out, uh, on a, on a, on a Saturday instead of not having an event at all. We plan on continuing that event, and we'll continue doing Easter, Mother's Day, a- as, as we can, based on what the current restrictions are.
Awesome, awesome. Um, can you give us a heads up that when you do hear from, uh, the governor as far as releasing, uh, restrictions?
You know, it, it seems like all year long, res-, uh, announcements were made on Friday, for something that was going to take place on Monday. Uh, I believe on Monday, we heard that, uh, he's planning on getting to phase five, uh, or what phase five is going to look like now, with an announcement sometime on this Friday, breaking phase five up into tiers, with a gradual reopening as you go through, maybe going from 50 to 100, maybe going from 50% to 75%, uh, but we're going to wait and see, but it should be sometime this week.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
We heard in Metro Mayor's caucus that there's going to be some type of a big announcement tomorrow.
Is that good?
Um, regarding, um, the tiered mitigated mitigation efforts. Um, I've got three questions. One is on golf midway. Why do we have employee retirement contributions on a golf midway employee? And that does roll part-time employees?
Uh, that's just for our FICA Medicare.
Oh, that's a FICA, that goes in, that's FICA? Okay. Answers that?
Yeah, that, the, um, employee retirement includes FICA and IMRF.
Okay, thank you.
The, um, Illinois...
That answers it. And, um, group insurance on banquet and on golf have escalated. Can you explain that to me? Group insurance is up 18% on golf restaurant, group insurance is up 54% on golf banquet.
We, we had, we had one employee that was split between, uh, restaurant banquet, and they were over the 30 hours. So we did add, uh, their full-time benefits, because they were, technically, they were, they were not part-time. Um, so we did add, uh, health insurance for one employee.
So that includes, so part of that split between golf restaurant and golf banquet, is that how that works?
Yes, they're, they're allocated between, between restaurant and, uh...
Five thousand...
It's about, uh, health...
Ten thousand, $11,000 a year? Increase?
Uh, health insurance is about $20,000, $20,000 a year.
Oh, is the other part into the gol-, actual golf budget? Because we got a 6% increase in group insurance in golf, too. So we've got an increase in, this is where I don't understand, is how we could have an increase in group insurance in each one of these categories where the actual regular salaries is level.
This last page shows that, um...
Is that just how you're allocating out that expense?
Our sale, um, I'm, I didn't follow you, I follow your question here. Can you give me your question, that question again?
Well, the main question is how group insurance expense for, even if you look at the combined golf departments, can go up 13% and salaries can go down.
The, the main reason the salaries overall went down is because of Kevin's retirement?
Yeah, the adjustment in the, in the main salary at the top, but still, how many people did we add to health insurance?
Health insurance was one person.
One person?
One person. Um, so on the total here, you can see the health insurance went up 21,000.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty, that, that's one person.
Okay.
From 168 to 189. On the combined page.
Is that a full-time employee now?
Yes, technically, technically, yes.
So there, it's either yes or no? Okay.
That was a part-time employee that was actually working full-time hours, so we needed to move that person into the right category.
And is he in banquet and...
In the, um, it's Laura, in the, um, food and be-, food and beverage and banquet.
Okay. All right. That's the only questions I had.
I had a quick question, and I, it may have been in Vince's question, our trustee Carbonaro's question. I just couldn't hear everything that he asked you. So, regarding the, um, um, opening of the state, we're supposed to be hearing something tomorrow, or sometime this week. If the, if our capacity goes from 50 to 100, can, can your facility be up to speed for Easter Sunday?
Uh, you know, we, we've already advertised that it's to-go, uh, curbside and everything, and, and made plans accordingly. They'd already taken reservations for it that way. Uh, to try to do both at the same time would be much more difficult. I would say we probably would circle the horses and think about what we can do on Mother's Day then.
Okay.
Uh, it would, that would, that would be rough. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't want to, don't want to get too far out. Right. Fine, thank you.
If that's all we have, we can move on. Paul, I just want to take a minute also and publicly thank you for the efforts you've put forth this year. It's been a real traumatic time, and the creativity that you've shown over there at Bartlett Hills this year with the pickup dinners and whatnot, the other things that we've done. Uh, thank you very much on behalf of, uh, the village.
Appreciate that. I'll let our staff know. Thank you.
That concludes, uh, everything for golf, Mr. Mayor.
Matt, your first budget review is complete.
Great, it, it survived. Don't forget about that tree on 15.
You think he's hit it before? It's not the whole tree, it's just one large limb.
There's a story behind that, but I'm not going to share it in public. They'll have to talk to me after the meeting.
Ready? Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. Um, I've got Tyler Eishem, our Assistant Director of Public Works, and myself are going to present the public works budget. I also have Mike Warmus, our Street Supervisor, Blake Grenley, our Water Supervisor, and John Puglia, our Sewer Supervisor. They'll be here to answer any questions. Um, and Tyler's going to start off with the Street Department.
Thanks, Dan. Um, thanks, Village Board. So, yeah, I'm kicking things off with the Street Department, which is the largest of the three divisions. Uh, they maintain everything as far as, like, the streets, snow plowing, tree trimming, streetlight maintenance, street sweeping, the cemetery, storm sewer, quite a bit. And, uh, overall, the Street Department budget's increased by 8%, but that mainly is due to the inclusion of the new brush program that was in here, which we're going to go over after this. So, it is kind of there as a placeholder, but depending on what the board decides to do, that will adjust accordingly. And so, going on from that, uh, we went out for the brush collection bid as another option. And since groups have been handling it, the village has been able to utilize staff for more necessary infrastructure improvements, things like concrete repair, tree trimming, a lot more stuff that we need to get done is able to get done. And then on the next page, continuing on with bike path maintenance, uh, we repaved the bike paths from Centennial to Wallace Court. And we had village staff do the removal and restoration of the path. And then currently, we are also partnering with MWRD in their green infrastructure program on the West Bartlett Road path across from the Village Church of Bartlett. And then we continue to work with the Bike and Run Committee on future paths and maintenance that should be done. We're looking to do that as that committee moves forward. And even despite early challenges due to the pandemic, we were still able to respond to 2,500 resident requests. And we're able to continue moving forward with our MFT and block pruning programs, concrete replacement and sweeping programs. And in that same vein, on the net, on the next page, we increased our tree trimming by 103% and our concrete replacement by 41%. So even though it was a weird year, we're still quite busy. And as far as the overall summary, there's no real changes in staffing. We're not requesting any new personnel. But on capital outlay, there are a few, uh, replacement vehicles, a lot of our older ones, using that evaluation system we've implemented. They do score very high, which is not something you want to do. So we do have two large dump trucks with plows and spreaders that are being proposed to be replaced. And then also, another one would be our sign and streetlight truck, which is actually from O2. Uh, we are proposing to replace the fence at Rosica Park, it's fallen down quite a bit. And we keep having to do minor repairs, so it's probably just best to just replace all of it.
It may be better to hear, um, a little more clear, if you, yeah, we don't, I think that's fine. You're more than 10 feet away from anyone, so...
From everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is this better?
Yeah. Uh, we are proposing a new street sign software, which will replace the 20-year-old software, and we'll also be able to make our own banners at that point. Then, uh, another one, we're proposing an electric sliding gate at Public Works. This will be split among all three divisions, so you'll see this one on each of the division's capital outlays, but it's the same thing. So it's approximately 7,000 per division, and this is for increased security when working after hours, so we don't have to leave the gate completely open. Right now, it's a manual gate. So trespassers can get in. Hopefully, they don't, but... Then, uh, we're also looking at a snow plow and pusher attachment for the skid steer, which would help clear the, the police parking lots and the bike paths, and also replacing the HVAC units at administration.
Well, we, regarding the, the replacement of the dump trucks, um, we're replacing a 2008 that's got 40,000 miles? Is that right? Am I reading that right? And a 2009 that's got 37, is that the average useful life of a dump truck, those miles?
It's more about the hours that they trail, because they're, they're the ones working hard during the winters. They're hauling, you know, they got the salt in there, they're taking the beating from the salt being in there. So, it's really about the age of it, and how much deterioration is occurring from the salt damage and, and that type of stuff. So they don't get a ton of miles, I mean, they're driving all the roads during, when they're plowing, obviously. But it's overall, in a given year, they're, they're not putting on a ton of miles.
Okay.
Yeah, plowing is rough on a vehicle.
What's that?
Plowing in general is rough on any type of vehicle.
Yeah, is this more of an ask, or is it an absolute, like, need? Are these things costing a lot of money to maintain?
They have, I mean, Mike can answer on the repairs, but I mean, at 2008, they tend to, the maintenance costs tend to ramp up pretty quickly. Thirty and 25.
Thirty and 25, and, and I'm wondering who... I don't mean to laugh, but I'm wondering who created the evaluation numbers? Is it the people that sell dump trucks? And I'm not, I'm just being facetious, but, um... Okay. I, I'm just curious as to, because, you know, you got to be a little speculative about that, because it's such a huge expense. Um, and I know we talked about this before when we were prepping for budget, and I understood what went into those numbers and, and how... But if it doesn't reflect a, a real danger or a real problem, and I would guess that the village would want to extend these trucks as long as we possibly could. to get every ounce of life out of them, um, until they're really expensive to maintain.
Why don't we take a look at the score sheets in terms of the maintenance numbers?
Yeah. How many- how many dump trucks do we have total? And that's this kinda truck? So they have salt in the back and they have a plow in the front? We have twenty-two of them? And- and just- just so I can get a perspective on this, in a- in a- in a regular, normal winter, how many of these trucks are on the road at any given time? All twenty-two are on the road at a given time? And how many of those- we probably had a lot of them this year, but last year, we probably had one full event, I would guess. Or two. So my thought po- process is, i- if we're gonna get one, that might make sense, because one of them, in all likelihood, or maybe two, or maybe three, or four, or five of these things are sitting most of the time anyway. Right?
And they do take approximately, it's a year lead time?
Yeah.
So if we order it now, it'll be another...
So just like we do with our police vehicles, is there a reason why we haven't kinda set this up on a rotation? I know with the police vehicles, we say, this is- when it hits this marker, this is where we're at, and we've got four trucks closed, we've got seven trucks that are, we got blah, blah, blah. Have we done that with these major expenses?
That's what we're trying to do by replacing the oldest ones so that we don't...
I would be ha- I would be fine with replacing one of these maybe this year, and then give us some type of an idea as to what's planned in the future. Um, that- I would be in favor of that.
I agree.
Um, because at any given time, if you have a hundred and twenty thousand dollar truck sitting there, or a hundred and sixty thousand dollar truck sitting there, that's expensive.
And you know, yeah, Mayor, I- I agree, and I also think we should take a look at the, um, the rating evaluation that we use. We're using the same evaluation scale for a squad car and a dump truck.
Okay.
And I think maybe we need to take a look at that as well.
Yeah, that might be an improvement, and- and that way, we're kind of on a cycle, and we're not trying to, like, say, okay, we're just... These might last another four years, maybe they won't, or three years, or, hey, you know, we spent eight- eighty, or we spent eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars last year replacing the parts on these two trucks, and so that really makes sense. That kinda detailed information, when we're spending this kinda money, would make sense for me.
Thank you. That's what I was gonna ask, if there's any way we could get the detail on what we've spent on these two.
So not that we'd wanna get into granular stuff, but I think that's something we need to work on, um, and putting together, because then if you bring it up and you say, "Hey, you know what? We're gonna spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on a new truck, because the one we're replacing cost us forty thousand dollars to keep on the road last year." Um...
Yeah, we can tailor a new eval system more for these larger vehicles, 'cause...
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not the same as everyday use.
Do we get anything if we, like, sell them?
Oh, yeah.
Hmm?
Do we?
Yep. We put them on auction, and we've been doing actually pretty well with them.
But if you wait too long, you get nothing. So it's kinda like- kinda like getting a used car.
Kind of a trade-off.
Yeah. So I think, um, I would be in- I would be okay with getting one new one and, um, and then try to present something to the Board where we got a logical plan as to what's gonna happen in the future.
We could, yeah, we can put together the twenty-two vehicles, ages and all that.
And I'd like to get to tracking and how many of these vehicles are sitting on average when there is, um, you know, a typical winter. Right?
Have we had any, uh, trucks break down while plowing snow?
Oh, yeah.
Does that affect services?
Yeah, and it's probably one of these two, too.
Yeah, I- I agree with that thought process, but I believe one of the- the number one with the two large dump trucks, one of these is a carryover from last year where we didn't spend any money.
I don't remember if we postponed one last year.
It says requested prior year, yes.
So I would- I would just go with the same logic on the, um, combination sign, streetlight truck, as- as I'd really like to see... And I know we've went through this before, and I don't wanna beat a dead horse, 'cause I know, Dan, that you've explained this to us before on this- this ranking system. But I really wanna understand who created it and- and what the probability of this being more expensive to fix versus replace is.
Okay.
Especially on these big-ticket items. We don't wanna put any of our drivers in danger. We wanna make sure we're efficient, and like Trustee Hopkins said, we wanna make sure that we have a continuous service that the residents have expected. And I can tell you, Streets Department, I get so many compliments on how quickly our roads are cleaned, how well they're cleaned. Um, I'm not so much in the cul-de-sac sometimes, but- but the- the general streets get cleaned. If you drive anywhere around this area outside of Bartlett and on a really heavy event day, it's- it's issues. So...
Sign truck and light truck. Um, the two thousand and two that we're talking about getting rid of, that crane has to be inspected yearly, and it's to the age that they can't guarantee they're gonna inspect it.
So it's- renders it inoperable?
Yes, and it's coming up.
Be inoperable.
It's coming up in April, just so you know.
Okay. That's a real- that- that's really good information.
But then that one would take a year to replace also?
Probably about.
Yeah, the lead time on these vehicles.
So then if- if- if it's not inspected in April, is it usable? So if- if it's not inspected in April, and it takes a year to get one, and we still don't have that service available to us, to the community for a year?
When we have, um, this is just a total sidebar question for Todd. When we have this kind of equipment that is- doesn't seem horribly old, especially the two thousand and eights, two thousand and nines, have we completely, fully depreciated all of that stuff, or is that something we do?
They're- they're depreciated, but we don't, um, we, uh, we accumulate funds in our Vehicle Replacement Fund every year based on the estimated life. So we've been collecting money from the Streets Department for purchasing these vehicles. I think I went over the Vehicle Replacement Fund.
Yeah.
You know, in our, in my...
And it'd be nice to tie those two in. So the coordinated effort to replace the equipment is- is tied in with the same discussion around what we're adding to the Police, uh, Vehicle Replacement Fund. So we can earmark saying, "Hey, that's for this. This isn't like a big expenditure we weren't expecting. This is- this has already been planned for." So if we can kinda coordinate that, that would be great. Thank you.
Could you review, um, item number four, the street sign software and printer again? Can you explain what that is to us?
Yeah, so we make our own, um, street signs, and right now, we're using twenty-year-old equipment. So it's getting kinda like all the technology ages out. And so we're looking at new street sign equipment and printer, and the new one we're looking at, we'll also be able to make the banners that are on, like, West Bartlett Road. So we'll be able to make our own, like, if we want something done really quick, we'll be able to do that, we'll be able to have our customization with that.
Is that street signs, like, the actual street name, not- or stop signs, like, what kinda signs?
All of the signs.
All of it? Okay. And- and what- what's the banner? What would the banner be?
Uh, we have banners that go on West Bartlett. Um, right now, we purchase those, but with this new program and printer, we would actually be able to make those in-house rather than purchasing them outside. So it'd be something we have to learn how to do. We haven't made banners, but it's something that we'd be able to make in the future. So if we wanted to customize, uh, Village of Bartlett banner, we'd be able to print those out.
So then have you accounted for...
Going to fifty-ninth?
Right.
You'd have the, uh, the ability then of changing those seasonal- seasonal...
That's what we do now, so, yeah, that would be the- that's what we would anticipate.
We would just do it ourselves?
Right.
Are we still going to, uh, do the planners and whatnot?
I believe so, yeah.
Will we also have something, uh, in remembrance, a doc camera? Yeah, will we continue with that?
Yes.
Okay.
And does the- the- the estimated cost of that include the training that you were talking about, or is that...
Yeah, that- that's all part of it.
All part of it, okay.
So would we end up expanding the use of banners throughout the Village, or are we just talking about banners on West Bartlett Road?
Uh, I mean, that's where we have the brackets for banners now. If there's other areas that we wanna look at, that's- that would be something that we could look into and...
Yeah.
See what it would take to get banners made, so...
Well, I don't want the- the tail to wag the dog, but if we're gonna do this and- and be able to print up our own banners, we should at least start looking at putting banners in other locations and not just that one stretch.
This- thank you. I think it's really more the street sign software.
Right.
That's something that we do much more frequently than we do banners.
Right. Well, and- and as the- the bike path signage starts ramping up, we'll be able to start doing that, too. So that's something that the- the Board hasn't heard too much about yet, but it- it's coming, and that's gonna be very exciting.
Yep.
It sounds like it'll be very useful.
And with that...
I've got a ticky-tacky question for you.
Hmm?
Um, the- the electric sliding gate with PW complex?
Yes.
Um, so there's twenty-two trucks out on the road on a heavy snow day. Every one of those twenty-two trucks has to come out, probably go in, come out, go in. So the- every time they go out and in, they're getting out of their truck, opening up the gate, getting back in their truck, driving through. How does it work?
It is- we just leave the gate open during the whole period.
Ah.
Problem is, this past summer, we had kids, when the guys would come in, they'd see kids running around down by the wastewater treatment plant, and they started playing games with moving some of our equipment. So that's when we ended up working with the police, and we put up cameras to try to catch them. Um, we think they were coming in, 'cause if we were in for a water main break, the gates open, snow plow, yeah. More during the summer than it was winter, so it was more of water main breaks and that type of stuff. Um, we think they're also hopping over the fence, um, so we've been working with the police. It's been quiet now.
Make them work in the Sewer Department. But give them a day in the Sewer Department.
Yeah. We'd like to catch them.
I'm just curious, how many times does gates open and close every day? Is it just in the morning and then at- at night?
Right now, it's open in the morning at seven, close at three-thirty.
But it's probably has to be open and closed all night long when there's trucks out there, right? So that- that in and of itself, these guys that are opening them up and closing them, coming in at different times, saves a lot of time.
We just leave it. We just leave it open.
Well, they just slide open. They don't have to get out of their truck. They go through it, slide it shut.
That'll be, yeah, that'll be much more secure.
By the time they clock out, if you add that up to twenty-two trucks times a really big snow event in the entire winter time, that's a lot of time.
Yeah.
Getting in and out of a truck. I think that's a great idea.
Any other, uh, capital outlay?
Plus, you should tell OSHA, our guys don't have to get in and out of their trucks very often, and they don't have to worry about twisting their ankle or...
Right.
Yeah, there you go. All right, when it comes to professional development, there's no changes. Not sure if it- what'll be held this year, but they're there. Same with professional associations. Those are the same. And then, um, line items. Our sidewalk and curb replacement is up because of an increase in homeowner requests to do the fifty-fifty program and more maintenance on it. This also has the brush collection program in there, but as I mentioned, we will be discussing that. And then, um, snow plowing salt is down eight percent due to the drop in cost next year. I don't know, but... And then, uh, streetlight maintenance materials on the next page is up sixteen percent to reflect how much we've been changing out. And we also typically get, um, comment energy efficiency reimbursements through that. So that money, a portion of it, comes back to the general fund. And at this point, if there are any more questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, on the very first page of, um, the Street Maintenance Summary, Personnel Services and subtotal of Net Transfers, page four?
Hmm?
Why the big jump in Personnel Services? Are we adding? Couple of people there. I understand the contractual services because of the huge snow event, right? But that still shouldn't be budgeted into next year.
Personnel Services is, um, showing the estimate actual compared to the- the budgeted. And so our estimate is below- below what the current budget, and that- and that could be due to personnel, um, changeover and vacant positions and- and things like that. Uh, as far as, uh, the- if we go back to the- the line item on page nine, it shows a- a better breakdown of, um, where it- where it is. One of the things is that we didn't have, we had a, uh, Assistant Public Works Director vacant- vacancy. We filled that. We filled that position. We've, um, filled other positions. So that could be, uh, part of it as well.
So that would have probably been in the nineteen-twenty budget, wouldn't it have been? If we- if there was an empty position?
It just was a transition from Management Analyst to Assistant. So it's just kind of a swapping of one position to another. We haven't filled, we don't plan on infilling the Management Analyst position.
We- we had quite a- a lot of turnover back in nineteen-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and so I think that- that has some to do with the- with the, um, people that retired went out at the top of the range, and then we brought in people partway through the year. I think that's part of the reason as well, why you're, um, I think everybody who's, uh, the departmental, the Street Supervisor, um, Assistant Public Works Director, there are... The Public Works, Assistant Public Works Director is split over all three divisions, so that's- that's not a really big increase, but, um...
Well, it's a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in just jet- regular salaries.
And it had been flat for a number of years, and I think that was due to the turnover. And I believe that, um, now that we've had people in those positions for- for longer than, uh, since they've been moved into those positions, that's part of the reason.
Okay. I- I still don't understand it, but I'll- I'll accept that answer. And when we're increasing services to maintain grounds, is that, uh, I know it says increase to reflect bid contracts, and somebody explained that to me, but I don't know if I caught that.
We've been hiring contractors to help do the mowing, maintenance of, like, Village Hall, Metro, um, open space areas, and some of those causes have- costs have gone up. Um, and then we've added other areas, um, and that's just a reflection of where those numbers are at at this point.
Okay.
Right.
Right. And it's kinda more re-appropriating where that should actually be, like Veterans Memorial and those other areas were better based here than where they originally were.
And then it brings me back to my golf question. Uh, we have all this mowing equipment at the golf courses. Have we ever- has the Village ever thought of, um, 'cause I know a lot of the regular mowing, mowers never run during the regular week or even on the weekends. During the week, they might some, but during the weekends, they don't. We've got all this mowing equipment that sits there. Is there any possible way to, in the future, think about cross... 'Cause they're- they all have trailers. You could trailer them down to wherever that we need to mow, and then we wouldn't have to contract out so much. Just something we could think about. We've got all this mowing equipment that sits at the golf course and it's not being used half the time. Um, we've got all this equipment. I'm just thinking out of the box here as to ways that we could actually reduce the amount of complaints that we get from contractors not doing their job and actually putting our equipment to use.
Well, let's add to that. It's not a bad idea. It's not a bad thought to take a look at. What about working out something that... What about working out something also in conjunction with the Park District?
Yeah. And one of the things that I'd like to focus on, especially with the efficiencies of the Village, is just the amount of equipment that sits all the time. And, um, and I- I think that, and I don't wanna pick on anyone. I know it's all utilized, and it, don't wanna ever discount the fact that the course is one of the greatest kept courses around. It's one of the best municipal courses in the state. But, um, if the- if the equipment is sitting there, a fairway mower, and I know they have different heights and everything else, and it's sitting there a lot, um, I just think that the Village might be able to utilize some of that to, instead of increasing our contract... um, I just think that the village might be able to utilize some of that to, instead of increasing our contractual, um, situation, just the folks that would normally mow the fairways could be mowing these other areas.
So if we're having to contract more of this, um, mowing out, is there a reason why we're having to do that?
Uh.
We're not hiring people. Um, I'm sorry.
Uh, pretty much just so our guys can do more of that, like storm sewer maintenance, concrete, you know, mowing kind of takes place during the same season, tree trimming. So while they're not mowing, they're doing those things. So it's a lot cheaper to contract out landscaping than it is concrete or.
Mm-hmm. We can do an analysis of, you know, I wouldn't want to bring on staff just to mow grass, right?
No, I'm, I'm just wondering because.
So I think we have, we can do an analysis of that, um, you know, to maximize the use of that equipment without adding staff is what I'm hearing.
I think, um, Matt's still here, right? We, we have, I mean, do we have the same people that mow the greens that mow the fairways? Are they busy, um, all, full-time people busy all, um, week long and forty hours?
Yeah, so most of our mowers are real mowers. So you can only go to a certain height, like half an inch or something. And you have to mow those. You're taking a fairway mower out, you have to mow it two, three times a week to keep up. So if they would, to use them, you guys would have to stay on top of it.
That kind of answers my question. Those people that are mowing fairways and greens and stuff, they're all fully occupied forty hours a week? The ones that are full-time?
We only have three full-time employees on staff.
Okay.
Our fairway mowers are more retired, retired gentlemen that kind of just work ten to twenty hours a week.
Okay.
And then we have, we only have one rough mower on a tractor. And that's kind of going around the golf course in the summertime every day. It's trying to keep up with the rough, so that's our big rough unit.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you. I'm glad you stuck around.
Can you explain on page ten, just for clarification for me, on machinery and equipment? There's a thirty-six percent, um, decrease in the, um.
Hmm?
Maintenance of equipment there?
So that's the capital outlay request, um, this year compared to last. So it's a thirty-six percent drop from this fiscal year from last.
Just not needed? We've, we've completed some projects? Is that the?
Right, let, um.
This would include like the electric slide gate and those items.
Mm-hmm.
The vehicles are in the vehicle replacement. So each year that number will change based on what requests we're having.
Okay.
Um, the prior year, we had a higher request than this year.
Right. So it's not a capital project, it's kind of.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. I know, I just wanted to compliment you guys on do, on when you do come out and fix sidewalks and stuff. I hear a lot of people say, hey, we requested our sidewalk, you're fixing it, got right away, so that's good. And that's important because you have people tripping and runners tripping on sidewalks that are like this and.
We're getting lots and lots of those requests lately, so.
There'll be more now that we had a horrible winter.
Right.
They'll be buckling.
Yep.
Thank you. Underwater?
Water.
Underwater.
Um, now that we're done with the transition to DuPage Water, we are kind of just sorting through things. Um, so the budget is pretty flat. It's actually gonna probably be a, a little on a decreased amount. Um, because DuPage Water did not raise rates last year and every indication, um, is that they will not raise rates this year as well, um, which is good news. Um, a couple of items that we're looking at doing this next year to help out, um, some of the EPA requirement. Um, EPA requires us to annually test backflow, uh, devices, which would be like on an irrigation system at a home, any commercial property that has backflow devices. And right now, the way our system works is it's the responsibility of the homeowner or business to find a plumber to do that annual test. And then we need the test result to keep track of it to stay in compliance with the IEP A. And our compliance hasn't been great because people have not been getting those tests done. And we keep sending them notices and don't get a response. So similar to, we recently, uh, renewed the elevator contract, which is an annual, uh, test that is done on elevators where the village basically went out the bid, got a price from elevator contractors that can do those tests and then locked in the price for the businesses that have elevators. This will be the same type of thing. We're out the bid right now, um, to get pricing from plumbers that are certified backflow inspectors that we will then lock in a price and then we can go to the homeowners and say, your backflow device needs to be tested, here's the cost with our plumber. You don't have to use our plumber, but it saves a lot of work for them having to go find a plumber because not everybody has a plumber on hand, uh, that they use regularly. So we're hoping that this will help soo, smooth out the process, get more compliance and get everyone tested and get us in compliance with the EPA. So hopefully that contract will be coming to you shortly. Um, another area that we're looking at is with the, uh, transition to the, uh, DuPage Water, we've got, you've seen the, uh, pump station out there, um, and then we've got our Lake Street Pump Station. We're going to be upgrading our Sterns Road Pump Station. It all requires, requires an operator be able to run it and diagnose if there's an issue, be able to handle it. Right now, Blake and another, uh, water, uh, senior maintenance guy are able to run the plant. So we haven't had issues, but during the COVID period, Blake ended up getting COVID and we had one other guy that could run the facility. It got me a little nervous, um, that if he would have gotten that, we would have been in trouble. Um, so what we're looking at doing is working out a contract with a consultant that would be able to come in and help us operate the facilities. What we're looking at right now is kind of a, they would work like Tuesdays and Thursdays where they would run the facility, let them get familiar with the facility. And then we've got backup because that consultant is going to have several operators that work at other facilities that would be familiar with our facility. So if we ever did run into a, someone gets injured or is out for an extended period of time, we have backup now. So that's what we're looking at doing there. Um.
And then is. Tired, talk a little bit about more who these people are.
Um, there's several companies out there. I've been talking to, to several of them. The ones that we're looking at, um, consultants, some of the consultants have retired, uh, public works operators actually that are water and sewer guys that do that for towns that need help. So you can hire them and they'll come in and, and operate your facility. Uh, there's other firms that are out there that, like Carol Stream, for instance, they have contracted out their wastewater operations. So they actually said, we don't want to have employees out there, you guys just deal with it. So there's that extreme and then there's, um, con, uh, contractors out there that will also purchase your system. I don't think we're at that point, so, but I'm just looking at getting operators that we would be able to get up to speed on our system and help us if and when that ever was needed.
And when you say operators, these are people who have specific certifications?
Have to have EPA license in order to run the facility and not, our, we're trying to train, at the same time, bringing those experienced operators in, they would also be able to train some of our other employees that we've been trying to get familiarized with the facility and get them to get their license. It's just, it takes time. You got to have so many hours and years in to be able to qualify to even take the test. So it's, it just takes time and right now I think we have a need to be able to have that backup. Um, Paul, I had mentioned earlier on the GIS side, we've been keeping the GIS group busy. Um, they've been doing a lot of great things for us. Um, one thing, uh, is the water main breaks, keeping track of those. We can, we can put a map together pretty easily. And we are keeping track of like the hours spent and all that stuff to be able to see how much time we spend. But it really helps us when we're, each year we're looking at doing water main replacement. We can look at a given area and we have a pretty good idea. Yeah, this area has had five water main breaks this past year. It's probably time to start looking at replacing it. Um, so we'll continue to utilize that. Um, we, we've been doing our water main breaks in-house, which is saving us, uh, some money there. Um, but we do have contractors on standby, like when we've had a couple, this winter was a horrible winter and some of those bad storms, we actually had water main breaks going at the same time. Well, we have water guys that are also plowing. So we have contractors that are available that if we get into that situation, we let them deal with the water main break so we can make sure that the public has, you know, roads that they still can drive on, so, um. And, uh, like I said, the Sterns Road Pump Station is currently under design. Um, hopefully we'll be going out the bid shortly and that renovation. What that'll do is we have a million gallon storage there. We want to be able to utilize that. So we need to redo the pumps, um, put them on a, basically a variable frequency drive so we can feed it back into the system and utilize that, uh, million gallons of storage. Um, we actually had our first lead service replacement that we did this year, which was good. Um, we're still working on trying to get that IEP A loan for lead services, which is a loan forgiveness program, um, where we would look to replace all the lead services. But we don't have that yet and it sounds like that line is getting long. So we're going to continue working on it, but hopefully we'll, we'll get that soon. Um, and then Todd and the finance department were, they were able to take advantage of the low rates and refinance the, um, transmission main loan with the DuPage Water Commission, which is going to save us about a hundred thousand a year. Uh, we have no changes in, uh, the water summary, no personnel changes. Um, as far as capital outlay, you see the, the gate in HVAC. Uh, the only other item that water has is sampling stations. We're required to take samples per EPA throughout the town. Right now, we try to use residents for that. Um, it's not always the easiest to get a hold of residents and taking it from a spigot isn't the cleanest way to take those samples. So we're looking to install, um, some of these sampling stations that could be on our property where we don't have to worry about that type of thing. It'll help us get clean samples, um, in the future. As far as professional development, it's the same, uh, no changes in associations. Um, like I said, on the line item stuff, the big item was the service agreements. Um, about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand was part of the backflow testing. But one thing that we, that we'll actually be reducing that because what we're looking at, instead of having it go through finance and put it on a bill, this will be, the contractor will work with the resident directly. And the payment will be from the, uh, homeowner to the contractor. So we don't have to be involved with it, so our budget will be reduced by that amount. Um, same on the operation side, I believe, um, if we're able to continue with the, uh, just like the part-time operations, I think the number will be much lower than my budgeted number of a hundred and twenty. Um, at least the numbers that I've been talking to some of the consultants, so it'll be much lower than that. Um, and then we've made some other adjustments just based on going through how we've had over a year with the system, how much chlorine we're using, that type of stuff. So we made some minor adjustments in line items on that. Um, and like I said, we're overall about two percent below, which will actually be better once we get rid of that backflow testing, um, line item. Any questions on water? I'll go to sewer. Um, on the sewer side of things, we're looking at being slightly over. A lot of that is due to, uh, we're looking at removing an underground storage tank and replacing a old generator. You'll see that on the capital outlay. Um. The big thing, um, as you know, we made the adjustment on lateral service lining. We actually just, uh, recently approved those contracts and we had the pre-construction meetings with that. And we have currently, and it continues to grow, but we have fourteen homeowners signed up to, to jump on that program. So I think making that change to eighty-five fifteen has worked and we'll see how it goes and go from there, but.
How many total houses do we have that would need that? Like a, a lot, right?
There's a lot. Yeah, there are a lot.
Like a couple of thousand on the north side?
Um, I don't know if it's that many. I don't remember what that number is.
I think at one point we identified the number.
It might be in that, it's all the clay ones and it is in that area. They're averaging about ten thousand dollars apiece. So we're looking at, homeowners are coming up with about fifteen hundred dollars, so it's a.
How's our market? How, how do we get that information out as far as that new program?
Right now, what we've been doing, uh, when we do the smoke testing.
Mm-hmm.
From there, we see where there are bad surfaces for sure. Um, so we've sent notices to all those homeowners and that, that's some, a lot of the ones that are here are the ones. Um, and then, you know, we're going to older, um, we have had a couple of years of, uh, smoke testing. This is our first year of doing the laterals, so we sent it out to all those. Um, we have it posted on our website. And we haven't done a full, like the two thousand, we haven't done that because we wanted to kind of see what the interest would be and make sure that we would be able to afford all those. But I think as we see that interest, we'll get that word out even more and, uh, continue the program. I think it'll be great to start chipping away at these.
Would those homeowners be interested in like providing a testimonial so someone has like a case study to read? Or something you can give to someone or tell them?
Yeah, definitely. As we get these, uh, this year's program done, we'll talk to the residents, make sure things went smoothly. Um, and then, yeah, we'll, the word will start to spread. I mean, we already are seeing people talking to others saying, hey, you should get onto this. So we're seeing that already and I think it's just going to continue to, to go, so.
It was Trustee Hopkins that brought up that split, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was a good idea.
Goodness to Trustee Hopkins.
Yep. Yeah, no, it's, it, I, I think it's going to be good. I just hope we don't get overwhelmed. Because it, it adds up quick, but it's a, it'll be a great, uh.
We've, we've slotted and, if I remember correctly, we said, okay, we have this amount of money. So if anybody comes in over that amount, then they're going to have to wait till the next time we allot enough money to do it. Yep. Okay, good. Thank you.
Um, and then the main, we're also doing sewer main, our, uh, lines. We're doing a, a large section of that as well. Uh, that'll all get started up shortly. Um, and we're going out the bid for manhole rehab, which is the same type of thing. We line, line manholes. Um, and we're doing more of the frames and lids and some of the work ourselves with our crews in preparation for that lining. It'll save us money in the long run because we can get some of that prep work done prior to that contractor coming in. So it's, it's all good stuff. Um, and as you know, we're in the middle of the wastewater treatment plant improvements. We've turned in the EPA loan, we've turned in the permit. We just received our MPDS permit, draft permit renewal, uh, which was the first step that's needed in order to release the permit and then the loan. So we anticipate all that stuff starting to roll. We'll probably be getting out the bid for that project this spring. EPA, assuming we score well on, uh, the evaluation for funding. Um, their fiscal year starts in July. That's when they would review it. Hopefully approve it in July and then construction's starting in, uh, this fall. And we've got the Devon, uh, pump station and, uh, Force Main that's also underway. Uh, that one will lag behind the wastewater treatment plant because we need the treatment plant improvements to be completed or at least partially.
Shut that off.
Be able to bring it over there, so. Um, and then we just recent, uh, well, at the board meeting, we approved the engineering for the Herick House lift station and Force Main. That's the one on West Bartlett, um, down by the, um, what's the, St., uh, Maryville. Uh, lift station is there. There's a force main that runs down West Bartlett. Uh, we're going to be replacing that force main because we've had a lot of breaks on it. Um, so that one will be under design and it'll probably go out the bid later this, uh, winter. And we continue to work on our, um, odor issue in the Brewster Creek businesses, um, hoping to resolve that issue soon so that we can avoid those residents calling us on orders. Um, summary, no changes. We are looking at having a summer help assist us this summer. Um, as far as capital outlay, um, we've got that generator that I talked about. Uh, that's replacement in preparation of the expansion that's, or the renovation that's going to be coming at the. to be coming at the treatment plant. And then we do have a pickup truck that's due for replacement. And I think we heard you loud and clear as far as evaluating and making sure we have that put together. Professional development and associations is the same. And then as far as line item stuff, we've made adjustments. While we're waiting for the planning renovation to occur, some of our equipment is starting to fail. So, one way to get around that is add more chemicals to it. So, you'll see some of our line items have bumped up in order to make sure we stay in our, our EPA limits. We did have a violation notice this past fall for some excursions. We recently had a conference call with them. They were, they were satisfied with our response. We've been in compliance last three or four months now. It's all related to equipment, all of this equipment will be replaced, and we're trying to make the case, "Let us get our plant under construction. We don't want to spend money on equipment that's going to be replaced." So, that's why I think we started to see some of that movement on the permit and hoping to get a construction permit soon. And that's all I got, unless you have questions. And Tyler will cover the huge parking budget.
Do we really need to go over parking?
Yeah.
Do we really, the board, do we really need to go over the lack thereof?
There's only one item, so like-
Yeah, there's really, so it's pretty barren out there this year with working from home and COVID, and so there's not too much to report. The only thing we have as far as capital outlay was a recommendation from the TOD Plan of landscape and sidewalk enhancements.
And we just got word from Metro that they are going to put some money up towards it. So, we're hoping that we won't need to spend this, because Metro's going to put money up towards it, which is-
Fantastic.
We just found that out, so.
Good.
And I think that's all we have.
And that's pretty much it as far as parking.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dan and Tyler. And I think Streets Department. All right, Mr. Chairman. I think that's it, right?
We got one more item.
Oh.
Brush.
Oh, no, I mean, that's it for the budget review.
That is it for the budget review?
Tyler's first time on the hot seat.
Yeah.
Yeah, so thanks for the departments for putting together their budgets. I know it's a lot of work, takes a long time. Appreciate that. And so, I didn't see any major changes as far as the budget go. We'll see how the brush talk goes tonight, but we should be ready to bring something to be approved, the first meeting in April then.
That would be good. And just so the rest of the board knows, especially the folks that are relatively new, we have had on occasion over the last several years, a situation where we actually, I think one time, we actually had an added meeting, where we scheduled a meeting that wasn't on a regular first and third. So, we don't have to panic here that we have to have everything, and would most preferably like to have it all complete and concise, and all the board members' comments and suggestions and changes in by the, at least all calculated by the first meeting in April, when we review it finally, and then pass it in the second meeting in April. That is it for the finance chair. Next item we have on our agenda this evening is under Public Works Committee, Chairman Sawansky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We, last meeting, we reviewed the brush removal, the brush pickup.
Is there a chance?
Renee.
I'm sorry. Oh, Renee had it.
Yeah.
Sorry, I-
Did I say, I said Renee.
Yeah, I can't, I couldn't, I couldn't understand. I thought Stephanie was speaking. I couldn't understand. I was going to ask her. Hey, if you could please, I can't hear you.
At, at our last meeting, we asked the staff to look at some different options for brush pickup. So, I think you have some presented here.
Right. In the packets, we put together four options that we reviewed. We did some homework as far as talking to other communities and what they're doing, and kind of looked at those and then put together numbers as far as what we believe it would be, would cost us for the various options. The option one is the current program, which is the Groot Collection Weekly. The cost of that is $6.12 per year per household. And it's, as we all know, the downside is it has to be bundled. But, I mean, we're not receiving a lot of calls, at least this past year, we did not receive a lot of calls. And we, Tyler, sent out five letters of improper, well, they weren't bundled at all. We sent out letters to those homeowners, and they were resolved. Option two is what we discussed the last meeting. It's the Trees Are Us contract, which would eliminate the Groot Collection, saving the residents $6.12 per year on their Groot bill. But then, the once-a-month unbundled brush collection by Trees Are Us is estimated to cost about $20 per year for the average house, which we would then delete the $6 from the Groot savings. So, that net is about $14.28 per year. You could always consider to keep both, which would then just be the two together, which is $26 per year.
But if we, if we went with the Trees Are Us contract, we don't have to bundle anything, but each homeowner would only see a pickup once a month?
Once a month.
Instead of once a week?
Option three, some of the communities that I talked to, they, a lot of the communities have their waste hauler collecting brush weekly. Some, because I think, at least my discussions with them, is they had the same complaints that we got, as far as having to bundle. So, they came up with a plan of a spring and a fall collection, where you would not have to bundle it. It would allow residents two times a year to put out, if they have a large amount of brush, they would be able to trim that, put it out at the curb, and the contractor would come and get that. We talked to Trees Are Us, and they estimated at about, for that spring and fall collection, about $86,000 for the year. So, we estimated that to be about $13 a year. You would still continue to have the weekly collection in that program. And then option four would be Village Brush Collection. We would eliminate the Groot program, the weekly program, and we would have Village Crews collect brush utilizing temp help. You would not have to bundle it. But if we're going to continue to work on our infrastructure stuff, we would, because we're doing tree trimming, we would likely have to purchase a chipper or a grappler, we were looking at. The grapple truck is expensive. So, that's the higher end of that range that I have there versus the chipper truck being, or the chipper being about $75,000. This doesn't factor in current maintenance items. The temp help thing, we're thinking we'd need three to four temporary help. And because the program varies throughout the year, as far as whether it's one day, two day, three day, maybe the whole week, in order to get temp help, I think you need to have them have stable hours, like 30 to 40 hours in order to have them available when you do it. So, I don't think you could hire them for one day this week, two days next week.
I'm vehemently against option four, just so everybody knows.
I agree with that.
Option four is absolutely nothing I would vote for.
No.
But I think that in the best of all worlds, which would leave people thinking the same way that they think now, they can use Groot if they want to, and then have a spring pickup and a fall pickup, I love that idea. I love the fact that the people that are dealing with the Groot, that can keep dealing with the Groot, we've already done the communication, and Scott's here yet, he's done so much communication with how it works, and people, we don't hear from them, because they use it and they don't care, right? They, they're okay with it, but then the ones that have a large pickup could have one in the spring, one in the fall.
Right.
I would agree with that.
Good.
I think it's a, I think it's a great solution that you guys came up with, and I can't see anybody saying, you know, "I have one branch, I need you to come get it," or whatever. I think that's a, I think that's a great option.
Why don't we just go with that? That makes-
Yeah, well, let's just throw it to board, and then we don't have any other discussion around this, I'm assuming?
Well, I think we're going to have a, a spring and a fall, but I think we, we have to make sure that we advertise the heck out of it.
Yes.
So, we're going to have somebody who's, and, and, you know, we need to be prepared for what happens when somebody calls up and says, "Oh, I thought it was last week."
The logistics is a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's just make sure, and just like anything else, it'll take a year or two before people get on board with it. But we could have it, just like the shredding thing, you know, it comes once a year and-
I, I don't know. I think if we do that twice a year, you're going to see a lot more people having bonfires in the backyard, because it's inconvenient, and, and we're going to cause problems for the fire department, or neighbors, depending on what catches on fire. Option two would still be on a monthly basis? I, I think that's a better option.
I, I think you're the minority there.
I think option two-
Not right now. We're in committee. This has to go to the board.
Right.
Yeah, I think, Trustee Carbonaro, you're in the minority here. We've got five folks here that are very pleased with option three from, if you aren't, then-
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just a question about logistics on the, the twice-a-year pickups. That'll be, I mean, people will get notification, like they'll hit certain households one week and for a certain period of time, until everything has been, all the neighborhoods have been addressed? Is that how that works? They can't call one day, right?
The way they, the way the original program was, when they were going to do the whole thing, it was, they were going to break the town up in half. In one week, they would have, one or two weeks, they would have half the town. I'm guessing they'll do the same thing. We'll probably have a May, to give time, we'll have a May spring collection, and then probably a October or November fall collection. And yeah, we would have a map that would show, you're in, you're in this zone, and it's going to be picked up this week.
Like the hydrant flushing, you know, they stagger it, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think what we need to do when we negotiate that contract is just make sure that the people that are going to be doing the work, need to make sure that the first year, they're a little more flexible, right?
Yep.
Be open to communication the first couple of years, until we get into the routine here.
Yep, yep.
Is there something we can ask for them to, like how Trustee Ranky was saying, to notify everybody? Could they put like something, I've gotten like a letter on-
The Bartlet News Letter?
We have all these email lists. I mean, I don't know about you, but I, I'm on four or five different email lists for the village. I mean, we can blast it, we can blast the Bart letter.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can do Facebook and-
Right, Facebook, all that.
Twitter.
It'll be on everything that we possibly have.
So, would this, this would start, when would this start?
If the, if the contract gets approved at the next meeting, we would anticipate bringing it back next meeting. It would start in May.
Yeah.
It's going to be April already, so we've got a-
That effectively removes that $250,000 out of the budget. Part of it. There'll be $8,000 in it now.
A good chunk of it.
Yeah, a very good chunk of it. I like that idea.
We make it mandatory that the contractor keeps track of statistics of how much they're picking up, not just tonnage, but actual houses.
Houses.
I think that'd help us make future decisions.
I agree.
Yeah, it might be, might not be the volume that we're anticipating.
Yeah.
It might not, might not warrant it.
All right, well done.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other discussion around that? I hope I didn't like push that off a little too quick. Anyone? Trustee Carbonaro, I appreciate your opinion. Unfortunately, the majority here has spoken, so.
Okay. It's just my, just my opinion, that's all.
Yep, absolutely. I move to adjourn. By Trustee Ranky, seconded by Trustee Danny, will the court please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Sawansky?